To respond to what Paul just said, from my standpoint, this has nothing to do with personnel. At all. Mr. Bush did determine in his step three process that policy was followed. What I'm here to request, you look at policy being altered. It feels very limiting with the two pieces were preventing the approval of my being able to host an exchange student this year. And I want to make it really clear, I feel had to follow the complaint process in order to get to the stage. Again, I don't really have a complaint. It's more of a not an adversary. I've prepared some review points that I'd like to present to you. First of all, I'd like to just very briefly draw your attention to the significance I cited you all. There's two main points to that that I just want to refresh your memory on. The secondary school exchange program by the Department of State as a way of, basically, it's the cornerstone of our public and major research, research consistently shows that people from other countries who come to the United States for, are four more likely to have a positive impression of both the United States and the American people and our policies. So which is really clear and long established. And again, I'm here to appeal the denial of my to host an exchange. It's the second year in a row that my request has been denied. Now, when I inquired further about why being denied, I was told that Ms. Farrow had two reasons for denying my request. And the first was that she wanted to limit the number of exchange students to save local transfers. And I want to speak briefly to that because equating a local transfer student to an exchange student is really misguided at best.
Ms. Lee?
She would be in the classroom, they're ambassadors for their culture and for their country. And their presence in our schools really
Ms. Lee, may I interrupt briefly? Sorry, your connection either from my end or your end is coming in and out. Because I'm hearing what you're saying in spurts and then I'm missing some chunks. So I'm concerned that I'm not able to hear you well. And I saw some chat window messages indicating others were having the same difficulty. So I'm not sure. I'm nervous about this. I don't know.
I'm not sure technologically on my end.
Drew, would it help if you turned off her camera so that she was just using audio?
Possibly, we could try that.
Worth a try. And just, Ms. Lee, if you just speak a little bit slower and pause in chunks, it'll take the you know, patient portion that you're sharing, and I think it'll be a little bit more clear. So let's turn off your video first and then speak a little bit slower and I think we got it.
Okay, yes, I apologize if I was speaking too quickly. I didn't want to take more time than I was allotted tonight. So I was probably quick. So just to reiterate, exchange student programs are an essential part of our public diplomacy policy here in the States. And has a big and proven impact on how the rest of the world views the US our citizens' policies. Now, there were two main reasons that I was given for why my request to host an exchange student was denied. And the first was that Ms. Farrow expressed a desire to limit the number of exchange students in order to save space for more students. And as I said a moment ago, equating a transfer student to an exchange student is rather misguided because exchange students have so much more to offer. They're ambassadors of their country and their culture. And they really is here to have a greater global understanding. And that is essential, especially with the current events that we have going on right now. Can't avoid the fact that we are a global world and those connections are even stronger. The second reason that I'm is that Ms. Farrow chooses not to work with my chosen organization, which is Greenheart Exchange. I'm really mystified by that choice. Greenheart is one of the premier exchange student organizations. It has a 35-year history. Myself have been involved with them over the last 20 of those years, both as a host mother and as a local coordinator, which ago of years ago, but I'm still very passionate about the quality of Greenheart. Here's just a couple of examples of what makes Greenheart unique. Greenheart requires all of our students to volunteer in their host community. We expect our students to be active citizens while they're We also are one of the few organizations, about 15% of exchange student organizations are permitted to work with grant students. For example, Ahmed from Yemen, who was here 10 years ago, was here on an exchange grant program. Teacher Leaders Exchange is what it was called. And Greenheart's one of the only organizations that gets to do that and bring students from those countries. Also offers several other programs, including a teacher exchange. So Greenheart is very much involved and proactive in the interchange of cultures and of ideas and experiences in many different ways across the globe. I want to address briefly Mr. Bush's policy determination. Again, he did determine that Ms. Farrow's decisions were within the policy as stated. There's a difference to me between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. On page two in the Administrative Rules of Policy JECBA, and he says that Ms. Farrow's decision to choose exchange organization board policy, I completely understand and respect that. However, the Council on Standards for International Exchange Travel, we have a exchange programs, agrees, but also says that the school will also be open to new organizations a serious commitment to the school and the community. And I believe I've established that Greenheart more than meets that expectation. The other piece that I wanted to address is one that quite frankly really concerned me. He reflected that in my meeting fair, one reason for limiting this number is to provide optimum support for the exchange students who are accepted at Silverton High. She indicated that supporting students who are away from their families, learning a new culture and working to maintain their academic standing, pay deal of support from counseling and other staff. This, again, this really is concerning to me because school's job to provide that kind of emotional support is the job of the host family and of the organization. And students, very rigorous pre-departure orientation before they even come on the program to help prepare them. They have a lot of support from change while they're here. The majority of situations where students struggle at school is typically related to language ability. And in this particular situation, my student Hannah from Germany has very high testing scores. She was marked as fluent, so I do not anticipate this being a problem for her. Again, Hannah is going by a very experienced local coordinator who will take on handling any issues that show up, as well as our regional director, who has hundreds of exchange students, as well as our program manager at our home office in Greenheart, who coordinates with the student and her host or her natural family, as well as the program that provided the experience for Hannah to come. And we also have an on-staff student at Greenheart that is available to help. So there's a lot of support available for both the school as well as the student. And I don't feel that that needs to be factor, any additional burden placed on the school. And again, as her prospective host mom, I have over 20 years of experience in hosting supervising. So I've got some pretty good resources myself. And so finally, moving from policy to people, I'd like to share with you this from the letter of support that was sent to you by Ahmed Al Zidi, who is from Yemen, who was here 10 years ago in Silverton. And he spoke about the student exchange and he said, although year to year, those friendships and relationships may not have a large scale effect. A cumulative impact is far reaching in space and time. An exchange student is not just one student who lives in a host community, it's a host high school. An exchange student is two communities, that of the student and that of the host, coming together and building us borders and seas. It's my hope that you guys will take all of these points into consideration to allow Hannah to attend your school for the 20th year so that she and the exchange programs in general may continue to enrich our schools and our communities. Thank you very much for giving me to speak with you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. You continued to have your words sort of clustered for us a little bit. I was able to make out the vast majority, so I'm presuming the other rest of the board was able to as well. As if we in specific piece, but I think, I think we were more or less all able to understand you. So I believe that Dan Bush was going to be providing sort of the administrative response. And if that's the case, you're up next. And I guess Paul, if you wanted to inject anything first, feel free.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. And I'd also like to take just a moment to thank Ms. Lee for her patience in this matter. The timing of it was, was not great. And so I do really appreciate her allowing some additional time to restart the process and provide her the findings of that. So I think the, as if you read my complaint findings, you know, the question of, of who the district or the administration does business with in terms of exchange organizations is outlined in the policy. And so, so we do business with a variety of different organizations that provide student travel. And so we have a longstanding agreement with Silverton Rotary that is in writing that we will consistently have an exchange student through Silverton Rotary. And then there's a variety of other organizations that, that provide these, these exchange programs. So currently, we're doing business with EF Exchange, Pan-Atlantic, International Cultural Exchange, American Field Service, and we have partnered with Greenheart in the past. I believe their last student was here, I believe, in the 2017, 18 school year. And so it, we have, we have partnered with them in the past. And so I think the, the, to give a little explanation as to maybe, you know, why you would have a policy that would support administrator decision on who to do business with is, is student travel, whether it's an exchange program or perhaps, you know, some of the student trips that happen. I mean, there are a lot of businesses out there seeking to do business with us. And so sometimes you will form relationships with these, with these companies that provide these services where the predictability of what you expect from, from the company, from their vetting processes for students and their placement and host families, I think, have a large degree to do, to do with those placements. And so we do have longstanding agreements with those organizations. I know that Ms. Lee did talk about, you know, a refusal to work with Greenheart. It's only been now two years since we've, since the last student was there. I don't think there's necessarily a refusal on anybody's part to do business with Greenheart other than we do have these other organizations that we've worked with. And, and in terms of reaching a decision, and what I wrote was that, that Ms. Farrow was operating within policy and, and the number of organizations that we do business with. I think if there was a written statement or something to that effect that I, you know, the Silver Falls School District, and I would not support a statement that would say, we will never do business with this organization. And so, so at the, at this point, Ms. Farrow's decision to, to choose the, the organizations we're doing business with this year have been decided. We do have four students lined up for, for this coming year should, should the exchange program continue next year based on their current situation. So I hope that kind of explains a little bit about the, the businesses we do business with and kind of how they're decided and maybe a little bit why we may have ongoing relationships with some and then some are maybe a little more sporadic. In terms of the limit of numbers on that, that again is operating within board policy. The policy sets a maximum of seven. But over the years, a couple of different things there to touch on is, you know, we, we are a school district, especially our high school, that, that has a lot of transfer students. And that is, that is something the district should continue to want to have students. Last year, we were, we were starting to limit, you know. All of a sudden, with this current situation, we will want to be attracting as many transfer students as we, as we can. And, and so there, that would be a reason for limiting. And, and while I am, I would by no means dispute Ms. Lee's position on what the host families and the training and things for kids. I would say that a school counselor and perhaps others within the school would have additional duties working with an exchange student just in terms of when the parents aren't there, the host family is not there. There's probably a counseling role or somebody to be checking in with the student. And so there, that is a reason for limiting, limiting the students to three or four is, is also taking into consideration the extra work for the counselors.
Thank you, Dan. Couple of things that I'll mention and then I'll, I'll allow, you know, questions, of course, for either Ms. Lee or for Mr. Bush. One is that we are, as a board, going to be voting on whether we believe that the administrative team properly denied the complaint. And for example, we would be voting on whether we agree that policy was followed. We are not voting or trying to decide which agencies or organizations the district is working with and how many students per policy that decision has been delegated to our administrative team. So if anybody has any questions now is a great time and then we'll open it up for discussion amongst ourselves as well.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Bush. I wanted to know, so the board does not vote or suggest how many students can be, or what, how many students can be accepted, I guess, per year? Is that my understanding?
That is correct.
The board, yeah, excuse me.
The board, the board sets a limit of seven students that we cannot exceed that number. The board does not have in policy a minimum. The practice has been three to four in recent years. And in part because of the number of transfer students that we have coming to us and the ability to, the way we currently do staffing for our students at the high school level is by grade level. So you would have, you know, one particular counselor, because they, they track through with the kids, assigned to the, the, the exchange students. And so that was another factor in, in limiting it to three or four was based on also counselor workload.
So it sounds to me like a determination was made that there is going to be kind of a cap of three or four, even though it has been approved up to seven because of additional support that's needed for those exchange students. Correct? I can see how that create a little bit of wavy gravy, but go ahead.
Yeah, so there's, we cannot exceed seven. Can't, we can limit it to less than seven, but we cannot exceed. We cannot exceed seven.
Very good. So how long have we been accepting only three to four as a school district? Has it been a couple of years?
I would have to check on how long we've had that limit on, in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question for, for you, Dan. Are most of these students on the J1 visa and they're, they're with group sponsored programs? And so they don't pay tuition? Is that correct from what I'm understanding?
I would not know that answer off the top of my head.
I'm just wondering if that's what plays into the, you know, clearly there's a, and again, this is not what we're voting on. So I understand that. I'm just trying to clarify the, the conversation between foreign exchange versus transfer. Obviously, a transfer student is going to stay for four years under the best circumstances, right? And a foreign exchange student will only be there for a year. But I was wondering whether the tuition played into it at all, but it sounds like not all of them are group sponsored.
And I can't speak for every case in history, but generally speaking, those students are, foreign exchanges are actually enrolled and we do claim ADM funding for those students.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
In addition, that was one of the questions that I had. And so thank you for answering that. The additional question I have is, do exchange families receive funding to reimburse them for food and board and that kind of thing?
I don't know the answer to that.
Jennifer, I can speak. I can speak to that one is, well, I have an exchange student right now.
Yeah.
With Pan American. With, with our program, I don't even know which one we're using. But we, we've had two Rotary kids and whoever we're using now, and we've never received funding. But I've understood, I've heard that other programs do other, other systems, but we never have. So that's, that's been my, that's my current experience with it.
It's, it's actually technically unethical to pay hosts to host the student. It is completely voluntary on the part of the host family. There is a small, like $50 a month that a host family can, can claim, but they cannot be paid to host a high school student.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
Dan, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Okay. And I, maybe you can refresh my memory a little bit, but I remember our former superintendent had mentioned that we were not allowing transfers into our school district because of the high numbers. When did, when did we start allowing transfer students back into our district? Because that's kind of been frozen for a little while.
And so that may be, and that may be my misunderstanding, being new to the district in terms of that limit. And I think that that was also tied into the reason why we started limiting the exchange students is because of the closing of the boundaries for the, for, for the school district. So I think, I think those two things are going hand in hand in terms of, of how we are limiting the number of exchange students may have been incorporated at the same time as, as what was limited in terms of transfer students.
So I guess philosophically for me, I don't see any correlation between a transfer student in our local area and the exchange student from another country. It's a completely different experience and exposure to our culture, their culture and such. And I find it very difficult to comprehend that we are limiting our exchange students to three to four. And if we've worked with this company in the past, why are we not working with them again? Just, I have a lot of questions and I was hoping that we could do this at the work session. So, um, but I, I'm, I'm having a difficult time with the justifications of not working with Ms. Lee in finding a solution for this. We have been ranked very highly in our district in the past where we have multiple, multiple exchange students. And I've known many that have come through town and, and have stayed with many people in our community. And it's been an extraordinary, wonderfully experience. So I guess philosophically, I disagree with what has, what has happened. And I was hoping that there would be a better explanation as to why there was a limit. So.
So I think that, you know, the, the, as far as pertaining to Ms. Lee, you know, we already had four students at the time of her application too. So I think the, the Greenheart exchange pieces is maybe, is maybe part of it. But it is also the fact that we had, we already had four at the time that her application came in. And, and we also have other, other vendors or, or companies, I guess you should say, is that we do business with. So.
But we've done business with Greenheart in the past several times. But I guess, I guess I'm wondering why that's being completely denied when we have up to seven spots to, you know, and we have a willing, I mean, this is the biggest part is we have a willing family in our community to host a student. That right there is the most important thing because that's the hardest to find and hardest to obtain. I hosted several, or several soccer coaches from England over the summer when we had European coaches come over for the summer and the kids participated. So I'm finding it hard to understand why we, why the decision was made to say absolutely not. But also can you get something about, they have to have their application in by August. Is that last August, August of 19?
I am not aware of the timeline by which applications have to be turned in.
Oh, it's in the letter. It's in the, it says in our, in our, our policy.
I can address that. It is August, it is August of the school year that they are planning to attend is the
Oh, okay, so.
Typical deadline with schools. Again, this is the second year that I've made this request. And when I was denied back in early March or I might have been wary that we first approached the school, we were not told that those slots had been filled, just that those slots had been promised. And it's very frustrating for me, being the second year denied to host. And it's, it's something that I'm very passionate about and it's a huge part like to be active in the community. So I'm really hoping we can reach some kind of a resolution so that I can have the pleasure of coming in.
Yeah, it says here, yeah, in our policy, it says all potential organizations with an S or individuals will obtain approval from the high school administrator by August 15th for the coming school year. Applications may not be accepted after August 15th. So I'm trying to figure out the timeline here of when you can first start applying. And do you know what I mean? Like, do you, can you first start applying in February or March? Or she was told it was full in March and they already promised?
Johnny Farrow is here. And so she might be able to assist with this. I, yeah, so if Johnny can answer some of these questions, that might be helpful.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Johnny, are you on there? There we go.
Hi, I'd be happy to answer some of these questions. And I think we have two different situations that we're dealing with here. One was the application from Greenheart two years ago. So not for this, or, yeah, so for this current school year, I suppose. And that was a situation coming off of a really difficult experience that we had with Greenheart. Actually, it was a challenging year. It ultimately resulted in a student being sent home at Greenheart's discretion. And we had some disagreements about how that situation was handled. And we decided, and I have that in writing in an email in consultation with Principal Lockett, that we would take a year off from Greenheart. So we said one year and then we would revisit that partnership. We didn't hear from Greenheart again until February 14th of this year of 2020. And by that time, we had already accepted four exchange students from the organizations that Mr. Bush had outlined. And so we didn't permanently put Greenheart on a list. We simply said we were taking a year off. And then they were the fifth organization to contact us and we had set that limit at four. And the only, as Mr. Bush mentioned, the only organization that we guarantee a spot to is the Rotary because we are on a one-to-one. So one of our students is an outbound with that organization. And then we've taken inbound as well. And so we, we are very committed to the exchange program and to the students. I also just want to highlight that regardless of the type of host family they have, there are still high school kids who are dealing with lots of emotions and academic needs that do require work from a counselor. And our junior counselor is in charge of all of the exchange students because our senior counselors just don't have time. And in consultation with the counseling staff, they've asked us to keep that at, at a reasonable caseload. Our enrollment at the high school Our enrollment at the high school has increased. We, we are over 1,300 kids currently and, and their workloads increase as a result of that. And so it's never been our intention to, to not allow exchange students to, to be part of our culture. In fact, we embrace them and we believe they are an incredible part of what makes Silverton High School's community rich and engaging for students. We want to make sure that we can give them the best experience and that involves the social, emotional and academic support that they need to find success during their stay. Each organization has different requirements that we track. So Greenheart, for example, has volunteer hours. Others require that they take certain courses. And we're trying to navigate the intricacies of what that country's educational system is requiring. And we want to do our best at that and our counselors want to do the best at that. And I believe that we do.
So how can this problem be resolved between the high school administration and Ms. Lee? And not come to the, to the board level? Because I feel like that there can be a solution here somehow to have a foreign exchange student come here on very good terms, especially when you have a family who is absolutely willing and dedicated to that student and willing to take that on. We've had a lot more successes than we have had failures. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that this had to come all the way to the board and it was just, you know, not resolved at the, the multiple different levels that it should have been. This is an exciting adventure. This is, this is, this is an opportunity of excitement. And to have it come to, to the board level as an adversary one is telling me a lot more about the process than it does about the actual decision. And so I feel like, you know, there's a lot of good people in this group that can work really well together. And I think that, you know, this can, this, this can be solved one way or another. And I just, I have to believe that because we have a lot of foreign exchange student success and I still want to see that happen and be the face of, of that in our community and our surrounding community because we're known for that too. So.
So Shelley, I want to interrupt for a second. Lori, I believe you had a question?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Farrow. Ms. Farrow, can you tell me how many organizations you work with? And it sounds like there has sort of been a two-year, I guess, distance from Greenheart. Can you explain to me how many organizations you work with? And, yeah, if that would be helpful. I know that Mr. Bush mentioned it, but I'd just like to.
And I actually, I have a list of nine organizations that we have worked with in recent years. Excepted for next school year, I have four different organizations. But there are several others that in the past we have worked with. It just so happened that the four that we accepted got their applications in sooner. And again, this was in no way an, an attempt to prevent Greenheart from having placement. That was one, one year where we said we were taking a break. It was just, we had already had agreements with four and had decided as per policy allows as a school to, to take no more than four students next year. And to speak to a little bit of the background, when we decided to start kind of keeping it to three to four students, it was primarily because it felt disingenuous to tell families that wanted to attend here that they couldn't and then give up seven seats. And so we, we do believe in those organizations and the culture that they bring. And, and I think we've had outstanding success with the ones in recent years. And, and we look forward to the four that we're welcoming next school year.
Very good.
Can you clarify the dates? I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If you just give me a moment, I, I have to check my email real quick on those dates. But I do have those unless Dan has them handy.
I do not have them. I would say that one of the, the difficult things on, on this, just to respond to Shelley there is that, you know, the part of the, you know, part of the reasons we have policies like this in place is that, you know, these, you know, everything that Johnny said and has been said around exchange programs is definitely, I mean, educators oftentimes move with our hearts and, and we do have to set some limits sometimes. And that's why those, those are in place. It wasn't, you know, any kind of not wanting to work with Ms. Lee or, or the student that she, she brought forward. There are limits, there's reasons why limits need to be in place. And, and at some level, we needed to impose, impose these limits. And so it wasn't for a lack of not wanting to work with Ms. Lee or anything like that, but both the, the number of organizations and the number of students that we've been accepting on a, on a regular basis, you know, we were operating within policy.
Yeah. And so to clarify the date, Shelley, the International Cultural Exchange Services, we accepted that student on February 5th of 2020. The student from Panalamic Atlantic Foundation, we accepted on February 10th of 2020. The EF High School Exchange Year, we approved that placement on January 28th. And I, I don't have a student yet from Rotary, but I expect to get that. Again, they've already selected an outbound student. And so that's just one that annually we accept that. Gearheart first approached me on February 14th.
Okay, so is there a date outlined? I don't see it in our policy of any kind. Is there a date outlined where they can start applying?
No.
Because the deadline is August 15th. So if you start applying, is there a date you can say, okay, February 1st is the day you can start applying? Is there a date anywhere?
In fact, I get requests from exchange organizations all year, sometimes even mid-year. In fact, I had one this year that was a mid-year, a change of host family, wanting to change host families. So, yeah, they contact me year round.
So I'm gonna jump in here for a second. There's.
Thank you.
Things going on. I mean, one is if, if the board doesn't like the way that the policies are written at a future point in time, we could revisit that. I'm not sure, I see a fundamental problem with it, but I'm suggesting that's one remedy. However, I want to remind everybody, we're not here to decide whether limiting it to four is appropriate. That's been delegated to, well, in this case, Ms. Farrow and the high school staff. This, this decision tonight is specifically whether or not policy was properly adhered to. I think if we wished, we could choose to request to our superintendent to take up the issue, to investigate further and/or reexamine whether these are in fact the appropriate limits to be placing on them. We could have that discussion separately, but I don't think it's pertinent to the hearing tonight per se.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was about to say the same thing, really. And again, on the advice of council, the decision before the board tonight is whether or not the policy was appropriately followed. Not, not to get into the merits of the decision, except to ascertain whether or not it was made as a arbitrary or capricious decision and we have ample evidence that it was not.
Yeah.
So I, I want to thank you for the reminders, but I think it's very important to ask some detailed questions so we can get the scope of what was happening. And I, I feel like at this point, those of us who are asking questions are being chastised about our questions. And, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out what was going on and I had questions. I needed some clarification on some things. And so I realized what our vote is supposed to be and I'm making my notes right now for that.
I will, I will just say to Director Nealon, my apologies. I in no way intend to chastise anyone other than to keep us on track tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I apologize, Shelley, if my comment explaining kind of enforcing or kind of dealing with policies felt that way. That was definitely not my intent.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bush. I'm, I'm simply looking at policy here relating it to what you are saying. I'm looking at your letters and, and Ms. Lee's letters and I'm trying to figure all of this out. So this is all that I'm doing. So I thank you for your apology.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, the, our ultimate question here tonight is, was, was policy and process followed? And, you know, in the, in the admission of exchange students policy, under 2A program guidelines, Silverton High School may accept the maximum of seven full year students from foreign countries. It doesn't say that they will. It says may. So it's, there's wiggle room there. And under 2B, it says candidates will be selected from foreign exchange students at the discretion of the high, of the school administrator. So it's at their discretion. And it's kind of up to their decision process what they, what they would like to do. And I just, and I just want to say for the record, one of those four kids for next year is, is, is coming to my house too. So, you know, be that while it may, it looks like we got, I don't even know which program was, I think it's Pan American. I think we're in there and it seems to be well run. I'm glad to hear that. The way they're administered without regard to how they select the other ones, I'm glad to hear that Rotary gets a shoe in. Because as I understand it, the, most of the other programs charge the parents. So like by a kid from Germany who's here now, they, those parents had to pay. And Rotary doesn't pay. You apply and one, and the kids go each way. And it's, for the most part, a free program. So kids of lesser means, from families of lesser means can get that. So I'm glad that, I'm glad there's a shoe in with, with the Rotary. As far as how things are laid out for the other three, it's, it said it's up to the discretion of the administrator. And, and I've spoken to parents from other programs, just all around, who, you know, who are disappointed because they, because they didn't get a kid that, that year. And, and everything, everything Ms. Lee says about the value of exchange students is 100% true, 100% true. It's enriched our lives. It's, it's, everything she says is correct. But, you know, we can't accept them all and the administration at the high school has, has the reasons. So I tend to, you know, I support their decision. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
If I could just add, I, you know, I tried to capture that sentiment too, Tom, and my report findings as far as the value of the exchange program, especially some of the beautiful examples that Ms. Lee brought forward. Tried to include that in, in the, in the letter to, you know, really try to be fully expressing that, you know, it's not an easy decision to make.
Any other board members wish to speak on the matter?
I just want to, I just want to thank Ms. Lee for presenting the information. It gave me a new point of view on exchange. So thank you so much. And otherwise, I think I am ready to vote.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for filling us in on what goes on in the process. And I can see where there are a few questions that, maybe there's a few threads of this that we need to look at more critically as a board. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And since we're thanking people, I really want to thank Johnny for jumping in on there. I was simply responding to some of the policy questions, but clearly her presence tonight with more of the details was certainly helpful. Thank you, Johnny.
I'll second that. I thought Ms. Farrow, you did a fantastic job explaining it. It seemed very clear to me when, when you kind of went through the, the process and details and I really appreciate the background. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will accept a motion from a board member. If there aren't any, I may make one myself. Okay, well, I will move that we uphold the administrative decision that they followed policy in the regard to Ms. Lee's complaint. I believe that they did. So I will make that motion.
I second it, John. I second it, Jonathan.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, I'd like to just say something quickly. I am going to, to vote yes to uphold the administrators following policy. But I do have a couple of conditions. This, I wish this could have been solved at a lower level. I think that in the spirit of exchange students, there needs to be a resolution that, that makes everybody win. And there is one. I think just, you know, offering, you know, whatever parent, you know, can we work with this organization? Would you be willing to work with this organization and such? I believe that that can be done at, at that level. But you, you took policy and you followed it, but your, your solution was not there in this, in this instance. And that's very disappointing to me. I'd like to see more solution based information in the future regarding this if, because we've never had an exchange student issue come to a board. And we've had a lot of exchange students. So this is very surprising and shocking. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor of upholding the administration's decision? Well, sorry, I got a roll call done. Okay, um, well, I moved it. I'm going to say yes, I'm in favor. Lori? Lori is in nay. Debbie, I don't know if you saw that?
Thank you.
Uh, sorry, Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Shelley?
Aye.
Herb?
Yay.
Janet?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I just have it six to one. Thank you, Ms. Lee. I want to second the thanks for presenting and sharing a point of view. And also to Ms. Farrow, I think it was very useful to hear the discussion and I learned a lot. Appreciate it.
Jonathan, can I add one, one thing there in terms of Ms. Farrow's role? Just, just to provide some clarification, Shelley, to what you'd said there. So Ms. Farrow was directed to, to bring this, when Ms. Lee contacted her, she was directed to move that forward on the complaint process maybe a little faster than she would have liked to. To resolve that at that level. And so I just want, I want you to know that Ms. Farrow, you know, I think would have worked to partner with Ms. Lee and, or at least have a little more of a dialogue there. But had been directed to move that through a complaint process, maybe a little bit faster than she would have liked to. So I, I think the public needs to know that Ms. Farrow, from both my experience and in this particular situation, works hard to partner where at all possible. And she was under direction to move it through a complaint process.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
For more information, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we are next up going to move to our student representatives, which is Owen Kotake and Tanner Munson.
Hi, guys. All right. So to start off, we actually have some stuff to talk about. So FBLA, they did have their competition online and they did really well this year. Let's see. Let's see, they they had just, they had a ton of winners. So I'm just going to give you the basics. So the final competition results were that they had a total of 17 students qualify for nationals in nine different events, which is pretty awesome. I think that's just a little less than we had last year. But I think that's also because they couldn't do like an in person competitions. All right. So next, we're going to talk about speech and debate. Chloe Platt and Brady Tavernier made it to the nationals for dual interpretation. And Mrs. Cantwitz is being recognized by the National Speech and Debate Association for outstanding leadership in supporting and growing speech and debate programs, not only at SHS, but around the state of Oregon. All right. And then forecasting was last week. Students access the SHS forecasting website to forecast for their classes next year.
And the cap and gown delivery for the seniors, we all really enjoyed going to pick up our cap and gown. Even though we don't know what the future of that looks like, it was really good to see all the teachers there to support us. And it really meant a lot to just be able to drive through and give them a good wave.
Also, obviously, almost everyone has seen that all the senior names are on the lawn. I think this is a really cool thing. It was awesome to see that it got on the news too. I personally think this is something we should do every year after this because there's, I don't know, it's really cool just to see your name on the lawn. Yeah.
It's a little thing that means a lot to a lot of people.
Yeah, especially our parents. Our parents really like that.
And then here are a couple of events, cool things ASP has been working on. So we've put on a teacher appreciation week. Even though we're not in school, we're still trying to show our love to our teachers. So we posted a lot of thank yous online. And we also purchased pastries at Live Local on Wednesdays on Wednesday for our teachers. And they also got some coffee and donuts at gear up on Friday. We also put on a virtual spirit week. So like we put up five spirit days, five dress up days for the week. And kids would dress up and submit it to the Sorton High School Instagram. And we had three winners and we all, they all got Fox Squad t-shirts that and they were all mailed to them. And then lastly, we put on a virtual assembly last week, I believe. And it was really good. We got lots of feedback and we're just going to work a little minor details out. But I think we're going to keep doing those in the future.
And upcoming, we have our next kind of three weeks planned out. So starting off next week, we have our ASB applications. Because we still have to go through like interview process and also have students vote on the ASB officers. So yeah, they'll just be doing that through Google Forms. And we're also working on our second virtual assembly.
We're also going to try and put on a virtual talent show in two weeks. And so we're going to have students submit what they want to do. So like if you want to sing, you can clip a little video or like any kind of talent. And it'll be pre screened and we'll post it out on the Silverton Instagram page for everybody to see.
And then following that, we'll have our elections. So we'll send out all the videos of the like ASB president and all the class officers. And then I'm guessing we'll probably put out like a Google survey for people to vote on. And then we'll figure out what our officers are going to be later in the week. And that's all we got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving next, we are going to move to our public comment. And Debbie, I just realized that I didn't print out the the bit I'm supposed to read. You don't happen to have it handy to pop up, do you?
Let me grab it.
Thank you. I had everything with me here, except I did not print that. While we're doing that, I will request that if you would like to present your public comments, why don't you please maybe just why don't you chat Drew, private chat Drew, maybe would that work Drew? And then we can kind of go in order rather than everybody kind of all at once, you're talking over each other. And we aren't sure who was up first. Yeah, Drew says sure. So why don't you use the chat option if you can? And then at the end, if somehow you were unable to do that, I'll be happy to ask if there's anybody else. Sorry, Debbie, for putting you on the spot. I just realized it, right?
Hey, Jonathan, I can fill some dead air here. I see our Owen and Tanner are still there. I hope they are. They, they just, the past two or three board meetings, they've done a really great job of speaking toward maintaining unity and trying to keep something going. I know Owen did a really good job speaking about music two or three meetings ago. And just in an impromptu way, and I think he did the same thing about maintaining a graduation ceremony, something. Don't just mail the diplomas, you know? And so his efforts are are noted. And I appreciate he's 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 doing it future or wherever he's at. Yep, thanks.
Hey, Tom, I'm sorry, who were you talking about? You timed out for me.
Oh, Owen and Tanner.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Yeah, Owen's really been doing a great job of just speaking off the cuff.
He sure has. Yes, thank you for that.
Okay. To keep the meeting moving forward, I don't know Debbie if you've got it, but I'm just going to summarize.
I just sent you something.
You just sent it? Okay. Well, then I will actually read it. Let me.
It's part of the public comment piece, so I don't have the exact verbiage. I can't find it in my mess.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to take a note. Again, this is the request for patience from everybody. I'm going to just summarize here, guys. We all model to our students what it is that we're going to say. Let's be careful how we say it. And you get three minutes. Go. There's your summary.
Jonathan, Charles and Lisa are up in that order.
In that order. Okay, Charles, I assume you know who you are and feel free to pop up and begin.
Yes, I cannot start my video for some reason, but my audio is on apparently. Earlier, you mentioned that you're going to consider giving authorization to the administration to look at budget cuts and furloughs and that type of thing. And in that conversation, you also mentioned that the Budget Committee would be addressing that issue. My question is, is there a policy that the board has established to direct either the administration or the Budget Committee on what to consider when taking up this subject? Is there a blueprint for or a priority schedule? Should we be looking at cutting teaching staff first or administrative staff first? Where are the priorities and where is the direction from the board on what should be considered? So that's just a question.
Okay, well, thank you, Charles. I mean, I can say that I'm not aware of anything that outlines it to the level of detail you're just you're asking about. Beyond that, I believe I would leave it up to our administrative team to present perhaps at the budget meetings or during discussions, if and when we have better numbers to work with. I think at this point, we don't yet have those numbers.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not considering the numbers that we will have to consider. I'm considering the priorities that the board has established for how we address the subject.
Thank you. Anybody else requesting to speak to the board tonight?
That is true. Lori was just saying how, or Lisa, Lisa was just saying how the student representatives did a great job. So I think.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. With that, we are going to move into our discussion items. The first of which is in fact, the aforementioned authorization for reduction in workforce. And so I'm going to let Paul speak to that and then we can discuss. Paul, you're muted.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. That's embarrassing. Let's see, I'm going to try and I'm just going to read here what I wrote. So delivering such a bleak budget message on April 28th was a difficult but necessary task. And unfortunately, there are more difficult, yet necessary conversations and tasks ahead in this budget season. This item that's on the agenda tonight is one such task that 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 I nor anyone online with us tonight wants to talk about. But we must, because our collective bargaining agreement requires that, and I'm going to quote, this is from Article 14 of the SFEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. Quote, "Before any decision to lay off teaching staff is finalized, comma, the board shall notify the association that a reduction in teaching staff is under consideration." Period. "The association still shall have seven days in which to request a meeting with the board." Period. "The meeting shall be for the purpose of reviewing the circumstances which indicated a reduction in force and to discuss possible alternatives thereto." Period. "Following the seven day period and or the meeting as specified above, the board shall finalize this decision and provide 14 days written notice to the affected teachers and the association." End quote. That's again, Article 14 of the SFEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. So during a budget crisis, we must take a balanced approach to considering where we can tighten our belts and bring our expenditures in line with our projected revenues. So while making reductions in force is one of the last things we would do. It is the most challenging issue, one of the most challenging issues, and one that requires the most coordination and communication. So I'd like to state, state right from the beginning that before we make any decisions that will result in reductions in force, that we will consider everything else we can do to bring our budget into alignment with our projected revenues. Thinking ahead to our upcoming budget committees, committee meetings and discussions, I will share some suggested principles for that work, including taking a balanced approach so that we're not balancing the budget on the backs of our employees and especially not on any one group of people. That we protect classrooms and make our necessary reductions away from the classroom as far as possible. And that we rely on our strategic plan to guide our thinking and prioritization. So I think Charles asked a very appropriate question and that and that's one of the principles that is laid out there is that our strategic plan really is, should be a guiding document for our work. So with that, again, this is not something tonight that I'm asking the board to authorize the reduction in force of any specific number of people. That is not what we're talking about. But it is a recommendation to the board for for this authorization scheme to authorize a reduction in force. We will then take this information and go start talking with our our union leaders. Start doing things like looking at seniority lists and things like that. And just engage in proactive conversation that will shape whether and how far we have to go on such a measure as this. I will also state that that to not authorize this may entangle the Budget Committee and prevent the Budget Committee from having a conversation that includes the potential reduction in force. So with that, I want everybody to hear me loud and clear that this is not something that any of you wants to talk about, but it is a necessary first step in a process that really goes through until we have the budget adopted here in June. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. I don't have any questions and I do agree it's prudent of us to to authorize this tonight, given the news that we've been hearing and the fact that we are going to have to have these conversations. I really appreciate you outlining some of the priorities and sort of principles you laid out for everybody. I can assure everybody that this is, well, I guess I can't. I can assure you that my intent would never be to put this on the, you know, backs of any one group of people. Certainly not teachers. So we need to, you know, but we do need to be open to the conversation.
And we added to the agenda just a clarifying statement. So I hope everybody can see that. But let's go ahead and read it. That the administration recommends the board authorize the superintendent to begin necessary processes and communications for reduction in force, should it be identified as required later in the budget process.
Hey, Paul, I have a question for you. When you were reading the Article 14 notification, a notification, and you mentioned the meeting, let's see, the association shall have seven days in which to request a meeting with the board and so on. The meeting shall be for the purpose of reviewing the circumstances which indicated a reduction in force and to discuss possible alternatives thereto. And then it goes on to the 14 days where the board can respond. Just a clarification question. We're, we're, you're wanting a, an approval tonight to start discussion. What, what does the seven days and the 14 days have to do with, is there a deadline of some kind? Do we have to have this done by the end of the year? Do we have to have this done by August? I mean, why, why are you wanting this now? And then, okay.
That is, that is, Shelley, thank you. That is the perfect question to ask.
Okay, great.
It is, it is out of respect for our beginning of their, our beginning of the career teachers and anybody who who potentially could be impacted by a reduction in force. We, the sooner we can let them know that they may be potentially impacted, the better for them. So that one, if they need to start looking for their job, they can. And two, they may have some bearing on their, on how long they could have unemployment benefits. So we wouldn't want to be dragging this decision into August, for example. To deliver a layoff notice in August would leave that person really with almost no time to look for a new job. Because they got on, potentially on unemployment benefits for those two prior months. So again, it's, we want to let people know as soon as we can. But, you know, we don't want to, you know, alarm people and we don't want to over notify too many people. That's why we really do need to proactively engage in the conversation and start looking at this with our association leadership and communicating with 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 them and to start working towards a very thoughtful process.
Okay, so you'll have the licensed and classified leadership sitting at the table with you to come up with big ideas to to fulfill that shortfall of money and not go, you know, and not, you know, and the last resort is teachers and classified staff.
Yeah, there will no doubt be multiple opportunities for input into a prioritization process as we go through what is lining up to be a budget cut process. So this language that I read from comes out of the SFEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. This language is not in the classified. I can, I'll let Dan clarify anything I'm about to say. But when this does come up with classified, Dan does engage directly with the classified union leadership. So Dan, did I represent that accurately?
Yeah, the processes are a little bit different, although there likely will be some collaboration in the input portion of it. Classified because their positions can ebb and flow more year to year. There's not a notification process. There can be student needs that could reduce the number of aides maybe in a particular, that are needed in a particular year. So the the layoff and recall process happens more frequently with classified employees. But in this budget situation, that will, some of the input parts will happen together. For the license have this as part of their contract that the board must must take this step.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, my point is that I want to, I just wanted to understand that the leaderships of both of these groups would be, you know, represented in the talks with you. Because they are, you know, the classified staff are one of the lowest paid in the district. And for them to get laid off would be, could be very devastating for them. So, you know, having their voice heard and being a part of those conversations, it, for me, that's very important to have. And are there any other, have you guys already started coming up with a? And are there any other, have you guys already started coming up with a list of things that you could cut at all or with a dollar note? And my second part of the question is, since we haven't had students coming to the actual buildings, how much money have we saved since March? Or since, you know, what, or will we get those in a financial from Steve?
Yeah, more information on updated ending fund balance projection will will be coming from Steve. But no, we really haven't actually started a process.
Okay.
Really, what we need to do is be thinking about when we do get that information, it's going to come really late in the process, devastatingly late. I mean, this really makes us super challenging this year. We would be we would be way behind if we didn't actually start some of these conversations now to start be, like I said, communicating with our association leadership and to start mapping out. But really what will happen is that we'll have this revenue update here at the end of May and then after we, after we, the governor calls in the legislature for a special session, then we'll really know and then we'll get serious. But we're gonna probably have to develop some scenarios. So for example, we might have a scenario where we develop a spending plan that is, what if the state is, the state's school fund is $100 million off? Here are the things to do. If the state school fund is $200 million down, here's some additional things we would do. And if it's 300 million, so we kind of have some scenarios. And so we'll be talking with the committee about those scenarios and we will provide multiple opportunities for input for people.
Okay.
If I could maybe add one more comment to that, just because I think it is in line with the is, you may be familiar with the work share furlough program that other districts have done with their associations. And so we are in conversations with both of our associations. We actually did submit an application on Friday with the signature of both of our associations to get our application in. That does not commit either the association or the district of moving towards that. But without the application process, you can send it in and then change your mind or one, one party can say, no, we're not interested in that. So we did submit that with the signature of both association leaders on Friday. And we do have an upcoming potential bargaining session with SFEA on Wednesday to discuss that further. Again, these are, you know, it's, it's happening super fast and but both parties are looking to see, is this an opportunity for the district to save some money with with a lesser impact on on the both classified and licensed staff members?
Thank you for that.
Okay. No other, go ahead.
So just to clarify, the impetus of talking about the reduction in force tonight is because of the SFEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. But that doesn't mean that reductions in force would only come from that group, that it could come from any employee group. We have all sorts of employees. And we are trying to avoid reductions in force if possible. And my last question is, so we have a hard deadline for our budget is June 30. Is the impetus of of doing this tonight before we have the May 20 numbers so that we can meet that deadline? Is there any way we could meet it by waiting until we have the May 20 numbers? Or are the May 20 numbers just certain not going to be specific enough? That that we can, we're gonna need to come up with several different scenarios regardless of what May 20 brings. Am I making any sense whatsoever?
Yeah, Jennifer, I think the timing of this actually, so, you know, I would not foresee a lot of decisions being made between tonight and May 20. I mean, part of it comes back to that. If if May 25, the work session was not Memorial Day and we could wait two weeks to do, to do the authorization at that point would make, my, my biggest concern is the time period between the May 20 forecast, May 25 budget meeting and the next board meeting being June 8. That's the gap of time that I am most concerned with to wait to June 8 to do an authorization because then that it it puts that procedure towards the end of that June 30 timeframe. And so this allows the authorization to be in place. It allows the association to make their request to you. And I think that puts us in a better timeframe for, you know, possibly having, you know, if SFEA requests to meet, that could be, that could be on the agenda for the June 8 board meeting. So I think there's some timing things for me that that make this an important time to do that versus waiting for June 8 being the next time that you're together after May 20, if that makes sense.
It does. I, there's just, I think, concern, people are concerned because we don't even have that number yet and people jump to conclusions. They think that, oh, you know, we're gonna increase class sizes and what does that mean for my child? After this, you know, half year that my child has had in school. And so anyway, I just want to voice that concern because it has to weigh somewhere in the balance of this decision.
Thank you.
I totally, I totally agree with that. And and the May 25 might have been a better date to know when we know with some more certain numbers. But my biggest concern would be waiting between the revenue forecast and June 8. That's, that's a week and a half of waiting for a procedural step.
Yeah, Paul, Dan, is there, we're, we're talking timelines here. There's seven days and then something happens. And then 14 days. If if the parties are agreeable, conditions change, can you, do you have to have a hard decision after 14 days or can you extend that longer? Does that, does that question make sense? Are these deadlines, hard deadlines that have?
So the, my read, my read of those deadlines are that your authorization starts the clock for SFEA to request a meeting. They have seven days to submit a request for a meeting with you. At that point, the the board is not obligated to to schedule that meeting in any timeframe. The board just has to have that meeting scheduled before any, before next step would be done. And I believe the 14 days would be if we got to a place where we thought that we would have, you know, layoffs necessary, then then that's when the 14 days would would go in. But I don't think that there's, by my read of that, this is the notice that SFEA would need to be able to then have seven days to request a meeting of you. And I don't think you're on any obligation to meet a deadline to that. You just can't take any action until you've met with them.
Okay, got it.
I have a question. Can we have somebody from SFEA speak about this? And where they're at, it sounds like they've signed a document. Can, can we hear from them?
Two things, so just to clarify, the the document that they signed on Friday is not related to reduction in force. That was just a a pursuit of a work share option. So I will let Jonathan decide on on SFEA speaking, but I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you.
It already has a slot tonight, Lori, so you'll be hearing from them.
Oh, okay, that's great. But well, can we hear from them now or are we waiting for a different slot or?
So they're gonna speak before our our action item. I think we should stick to the schedule.
Janet, Janet, have you been able to hear the discussion that we've been having?
No, I was totally dropped for about 10 minutes.
Oh. I noticed.
I'm not gonna make you guys repeat it all. I'm sure between all of you, you've covered the the salient points. I may have a few comments before we take action on the item later on, but I'm okay for now. Thank you.
Thanks.
So just to clarify, I'm going along with Tom's question about timeframe and extension. We have a work session, I believe, next Monday, which is the 18th, correct? Then we have a, then May 20 is here with all the numbers. And then we rescheduled our budget meeting for the 21st of May. So that causes concern for me. You know, to not have enough time to factor in, I mean, the reduction, I mean, is that when you're gonna start talking to SFEA about reduction and I mean, I don't feel comfortable now having a budget meeting on the 21st. If if this is the situation, do you see what I mean? Like, I don't, can someone?
Jennifer, I'm not actually following your question, but Jennifer, if you are, that's great.
Well, I just have a question about, again, the timing. If we're meeting as a budget committee on the 21st, and Shelley, to your point, I think that the 21st is just, again, organization, right? Because we're the, we're not gonna have any budgets to look at. Could we do this authorization then instead of tonight? Do we do it on the 21st?
Let me share a thought on that, Jennifer. The the thought I have on that is, let's say we're in that budget committee meeting. And somebody suggests, well, maybe we should raise our class sizes and grades, I don't know, K through three by one and it would take the reduction of, again, arbitrary number here, one or two staff. It would be a logical question at that point to, for somebody to say, could we even discuss that? Because has the board even authorized us to do that? So is that even, is that even an allowable discussion for the budget committee? So the board really does need to authorize this so that we can begin discussing it and considering it. And and so we're notifying the association that this is, you know, under consideration. Again, no action is gonna be taken. No, no, no SFE members are going to be laid off until we get much further down the road. There's a decision point that is several weeks out.
Okay, so well, my suggestion would would have been to authorize at the beginning of the meeting. And anyway, but I see your point because I think that the larger point is that in order for the timeline to work so that we can be done with budget by June 30, you have to be able to start talking about things now and admin does before May 21. Is that a good summary?
Yes.
I'm, yeah, I'm, I understand what Jennifer's saying and I appreciate it. And I understand the points that Shelley's saying. It just, it feels to me like the cart's being put before the horse. I would really like to have another budget meeting and and see some numbers. I'm, I'm concerned about this as well and I don't know, for me, it just feels like there's to okay it, not just for discussion. It seems like we're opening up the gate for other potential things. And I'd like to hear from the other groups that it may impact. Perhaps we can be more creative in how we look at our budget and make things work. And and there's so many unknowns right now. I mean, I mean, this could all change and wipe away in a, in a, in a month or so, but I just sort of would like to hear more from the budget committee. That's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, any other discussion before we move to the next item? Okay. Next up, we have our equity policy. And we do have the document that's been sent out. There was a memorandum also sent out responding to several questions that were raised. Paul, did you want to talk to it or was anybody presenting anything or was it just up for our discussion?
Yeah, no presentation tonight, other than I hope everybody had ample time to read that that memorandum. There are quite a lot of people worked on this for a long time and a lot of thought went into it. And it is my strongest recommendation that the board adopt this policy as is presented and do so tonight. That's all I have to say.
I just have one comment, sort of a broad comment on the memorandum. I really thought it was a really a kind of a beautiful document in terms of the spirit of capturing the spirit of why we want an equity policy in place. I thought it was really well written and really addressed some questions that that may have come up. And I think it addressed them really well. And I'm, I'm appreciative that we were, that that Paul and the equity team were able to address those concerns. I think it was really smart to do it in a separate document so as not to potentially start chipping away at the fabric of the actual equity policy. I mean, I think if they were important things in there that needed to be changed, we would certainly, we would certainly look at that. But I think the questions were more general in nature and that was a really, it was a really great way to to address them. So I appreciate the team taking the time to to be really thoughtful about that and to go through it.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I'd like to say that I'm ecstatic. I I know that this has started back in 2017. And here we are, 2020. And I just want to say thank you for everyone who got the ball rolling and gave to this. It's so important. I'm happy to see it.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I have sort of one overarching concern and maybe you guys can talk me into why it's not a concern. I know that the memorandum addressed parts of it. You know, we recently have had a number of discussions about policy. It's been discussed multiple times that we should be revisiting policy. And one of the things that came up frequently was this question of, you know, is it a well-written policy? Is it measurable or is it aspirational? If it's not measurable or only aspirational, does that put us into various locations of pitfall? And as I carefully read through and reread through, I mean, the vast majority of this is sort of aspirational in nature. It's almost more like, reads more like a resolution, you know, we resolve hereby to, you know, do better and do these things. And and my concern is, as policy, it doesn't read as policy to me, right? If I read a policy document, it spells out things in very concrete terms or it ought to at least. And I didn't get that sense out of this document. I mean, it's, it's full, frankly, of things that are very subjective. And I'm not opposed to the idea of the equity policy on principle. So I'm not philosophically opposed. But I do have this concern, which is that as I read it, I have to ask myself, are we somehow setting ourselves up for complaints, right? Because that's what people lodge complaints against our policy. If the policy reads with things that are just filled with subjective terms, right? You know, the the term socially just is in there. Well, who defines what socially just means? It talks about how, you know, volunteers must have the will and skill to eliminate disparities in academic and social outcomes. Who measures that? And what if somebody thinks they're not? Is, I mean, do we now have volunteers that have to go through training? I mean, I, you know, these are, these, I don't think these are just me trying to, I don't know, I'm curious if anybody else even sees it this way. Like I said, can I live with it? Probably, yeah. We have a lot of policies that are aspirational. But I also heard all of you recently, or many, talking about how we need to revisit our policies where they aren't clear and need to have more clarity. And I would find that to be rather ironic if we went ahead and adopted one that was sort of filled with aspirational tone and then we're insistent on revisiting other policies for that very reason. There, I'll stop there and kind of get some feedback.
Lori, you got, I'll go. Jonathan, I can, I can kind of speak to that or at least the way I read it. And I, I get your point. How do you measure this stuff? As I read it and it really, I really appreciated the way like Wade Lockett talked about it when they presented it is that it always prompted a discussion. And that's how I read this policy. Whenever there's, it just prompted more discussion around the issues. Are we doing this? Are we doing? Are we doing that? It doesn't equity is a really touchy word because you start putting shells and wills on injustices or whatever you want. Then it then it can be used as a weapon potentially. Whereas the way the way I read it is it's it's used to prompt a discussion. And see two differing sides. Maybe who just didn't see things in the same light. That's so I read it as as something that that prompts, I think it's a fine document, and then my plan I plan to approve it.
Jonathan, can I say something?
Sure.
There is always room for improvement. But the team that came up with this policy, I think it's a great work. Like you said, it's not something that we can't change later if we feel so moved to do it. But it says, you know, the board will apply this policy to guide decisions that come before the board. We'll ensure the work of the board is focused on equitable outcomes for all students. And I think that's the key. I mean, there's words you can remove, there's words you can put in. But I'm telling you, we will never do the work of a school board if we keep trying to redo every policy that we have. And I guarantee you, the next person on the board will think a different way than you do.
Yeah, well said.
And I approve to move to approve it at a later time.
Yeah, I appreciate the points of view. That's why I'm asking, I'm just, you know, that's what we're here for is to hear what each other has to say. Like I said, that was my main concern as I read through it. But, you know, if everybody else is comfortable with it, like I said, I'm not I'm not opposed to it either. I just have those concerns.
Jonathan.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Jonathan, I think too, we had a committee that really worked hard on this. And it is it is now present, and it is in our present future, I mean, you know, for the future. But I want to say about the other policies is that I believe there we are eager to do that, but we have been instructed that there is not time to update those other policies. So I'm sort of at a tug of war with that concept that you shared. I do believe that this equity, the quality, the policy is wonderful. I think it was really worked heartily on. And again, this has been a process of three years, if I'm not, because we did respect the groundwork that got this rolling. And so I do stand by the policy, I certainly vote for it.
I just have a quick comment. So I completely understand where you're coming from, Jonathan, in terms of of conflating what are sort of principles that we would like to adhere to versus things that we hold ourselves to doing and wanting to be clear what they are. I think what what helps me is that I know that, you know, that the part of it that I've read, the board will apply this policy to guide decisions. I see this more as sort of a lens through which we look at our decision making. And then it does call at the very last sentence to say the superintendent shall develop an action plan to implement this policy. And I think that's where that's where it becomes real at the district level and at the building level. So I get what you're saying. I mean, we could insert some language about the board aspires to these principles. But I I'm comfortable with it as it is recognizing that that much of it is aspirational and just and just being aware of that moving forward. And then knowing at the end of the document is where it calls on us to actually take action based on this this lens through which we we look at our decisions. So that's just my my two cents.
Yeah, thank you, I really appreciate the input. Okay, any other discussion on this? All right. Next up, and by the way, when we get down with section seven, I will send us into a short recess for anybody who needs that. So next up, we have Budget Committee decorum, which is the discussion of some comments or inappropriate comments made at the previous, I guess, the only budget committee meeting we've had this year. And we've we've had some emails sent from Mr. Klopfelder to the board on the subject. And we are going to, I guess, open it up for discussion here regarding how we want to proceed. There were three options laid out for us per our own policy. One of them is that the budget committee members serve at our discretion. Members can be removed with board approval. Another is to go through the process of censure. That actually cannot occur here. That needs to occur during the budget committee meeting. So and would require a majority of that committee. And the third option is that we could accept the apology and move forward with perhaps some additional discussion about what we would like to see regarding this. There is no specific policy about inappropriate comments. However, I followed up on this topic and more or less, it's viewed as something that unless repeated or egregious, doesn't typically occur in censure or removal. So those are the that's the backdrop. With that, I'll open it up for conversation. Well, sorry, one more thing. The comments were clearly inappropriate and should be avoided at all costs. I don't think anybody's saying otherwise, right? So I don't want to debate whether they were or not. I think they simply were. The question is, how do we want to proceed?
Jonathan, I have a question. And can, as we discuss this, can the board also discuss or direct the subcommittee or the board-appointed committee to proceed? Or is it best that we see where tonight?
I understand your question.
I guess, can the does the board, since this was a board-appointed committee? Can they then turn it over to the budget committee to discuss and determine what steps to take?
The budget committee cannot remove somebody. Budget committee could choose to censure. That falls within the purview of that committee. The not removing member of the budget committee.
Oh, no, no. No, but I was wondering as the discussion starts, and maybe I've asked this question too soon, which is a probability. If can we instruct the budget committee how to proceed, like say with apologies and what's and not not removal? Or that, but that because that has to be decided by that committee, correct? As far as I'm sorry.
I understand your question, Laurie, apologize. I don't know.
No, I think it's me. So is it up to the subcommittee to decide on their own that if they would like to entertain or discuss censorship? If we so decide not to move forward?
For sure, the budget committee chair could bring that up as a topic.
Okay, I just wanted clarity on that because I didn't know how much the board was involved in the steps. It's just simply about removal at this juncture? Or just discussion?
Well, we are going to discuss it for sure. And the only actions that we can take as a board tonight, based on my understanding, is removal or not removal.
Oh, I see. Okay, that clarifies it. Okay, thank you. I would, at a minimum, like to hear a public apology directed to Ms. Nealon. Because it was in exasperated profanity with directed animus towards Ms. Nealon, and I feel that she I mean, if it were me, I would expect an apology publicly since it was at a public meeting. That's that's me. So
Thank you.
I'll hit mute.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I I agree with with Laurie's sentiment. I viewed it as a hot mic incident, you know, that it wasn't that was not intended for public consumption. But it did happen in public. And it would be I I asked Jacob, you know, Jacob sent us and the entire budget committee a nice a nicely worded apology, and I would hope that he would do the same in public at the next board at the next budget meeting. That's that's what I would ask.
Thank you, Tom. Janet?
I was just going to add to that. I agree with with Tom and Laurie. I would also add, though, that I'd really like to see a statement at the beginning of the meeting, just really being clear about the tone of our meetings. Be always being respectful and and just not tolerating any kind of harassment or disrespect of of board members or any any committee member or any member of the public. And then I would also suggest that perhaps we as a board could take a look at our policies. It doesn't have to be, you know, in any hurry. But but as we consider this moving forward, that we consider possibly working with OSBA to find out if there's actual policy that we can have as a board that speaks to how the public engages with board members and how board members engage with the public and just setting those expectations for respectful dialogue. I think that might be really helpful moving forward.
Thank you. Any other board members wish to speak on this?
Yeah, Jacob or Jonathan, I do appreciate I wanted to say I did appreciate Jacob sending that letter of apology. That cleared up a lot of issues with me, so.
Thanks.
You know, I when all this happened, and it was just within a few seconds when this all unfolded, it really brought back to me what we've experienced in the last year. And after experiencing the complaint and letters of concern from administrators, this board has really been tried and true, if you will, and been punched around, I think, a little bit. We've had to sit through some pretty intense meetings. So I feel that it's absolutely imperative that we take a higher road and start respecting each other. We may not agree, but we just don't have. You know, we can, we can exercise much proper respect and decorum. Because there's always going to be people who are going to appreciate what you're saying and those who disagree. That's that's life. I mean, that's never going to end. But we certainly need to be acutely aware, and especially after this last year, being able to process things, no matter how difficult they are, with a little of respect for everyone. And I do think it's important for this board to make a statement on that. Because enough we need to stop doing the sticks and stones and all the name-calling and what have you. This has really hit its limit. So that's I have to get that off my chest. But I think we have to look at how we want to take the steps in the future to be aware, to be mindful, and yet appreciate opinions, even if we don't always agree, or if we have bad internet service to boot. So anyway.
I just wanted to say something because I guess it's important or not. But I'm I was in favor of removing Mr. Klopfelder from the budget committee. This is not the first time he has done has harassed and bullied me in multiple different ways. And you know, I sit here and my heart is pounding and my stomach is full of butterflies. This is the result of being bullied and harassed by him for a very long time. And I can see that the board would like to make multiple changes as we move forward. And so what I would like to ask, like I asked in public the budget meeting twice, that he apologized to me in public directly. He apologized to the board and the budget committee members and the public at large. This behavior has got to stop. It is embarrassing for our district. It is shameful. And unfortunately, I will not believe him from his words because actions, like I've said before, speak louder than words. So it's going to take me a long time to see that he'll actually not do this to not only me, but to anybody else. We have an opportunity to work together and start a new chapter. And I think that's important moving forward. And I support Janet's comments and I support Laurie's comments. But it has to stop. It just does. We're not allowed to do that in our high school. Our children are not allowed to do that. No, no staff members. No one. We have policies against harassment and bullying. If you disagree with us, come to a meeting and say it in public with professionalism and decor. That's how we want to represent ourselves in this district.
Thank you, Shelley.
You know, Jonathan, I know as a board, we are elected and we appoint committees. And it's healthy to point out that a couple of the members on that budget committee also signed the complaint against the board. And it shows you that there will always be one side or the other. But yet there it is, and they have their voice in place. But I completely agree, as a board, we have to make a statement that this bullying and targeting and cruelty has to stop. It does not gain us anything. The board needs to make that statement as well, Jonathan, in the next budget meeting. I agree with Janet about the statement. And we have a board member right now who is just emotionally distraught of a very long period. A very long period. Of this type of unfortunate experience. So.
Thanks, Lori. Any other comments? Well, I agree, for what it's worth, right, that there is no place for those kind of comments. I believe the board. Is actively making that statement tonight and the Budget Committee meeting will kick off with a statement and an apology at the beginning of the next one per, you know, previously discussed. Ideas. Lori, the. You know, I guess if we, if you, if you or we or want to come up with a, a statement or a resolution at our next board meeting, we are welcome to do that. The Budget Committee itself is not chaired by me and, you know, runs under its own sort of policies.
I would be honored to, and I would be happy to hear from the other board members to make a very strong statement. A healthy statement, if you will. For all of us. To share our voice in this. So if any of you wish, please contact me through via email and let's work on this together and have it ready. So thank you, Jonathan, for that opportunity and I accept.
Thanks. Okay. With that, we are on to D, which is titled Other Items, and I'm not sure if there are any, but here we are. Are there any other discussion items tonight? Okay. With that, given that we're a couple hours into this, I am going to suggest that we take a very short break and. Maybe we'll come back, try it in. Four minutes. Nine seventeen by my clock. So I'm going to go ahead and bring us back in. Next up, we have our administrative staff reports, which has been slightly amended. We're going to be excluding items C and D. And Mr. Peterson, you are up first with the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to begin, can everybody hear me okay now? Give me a thumbs up. Thank you. I'd like to begin by recognizing that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we have so much to be thankful for as our teachers have, have and continue to work above and beyond to provide students with high-quality distance learning. I'd also like to acknowledge that May 6th was Nurses Appreciation Day. Our school nurses have been such an incredible help during this time, and I want to make sure that they are acknowledged for their outstanding contributions as well. Each of our educators is working diligently to follow the guidance for distance learning provided by the Oregon Department of Education to the best of our ability and as responsibly as possible to our students and families. Our educators are sharing daily celebrations of success in this model and are making notes of promising practices that will continue into subsequent school years. Our educators are also sharing daily challenges in their abilities to meet the individual needs of students and families, where they, where they are academically, as well as socially, emotionally and logistically within their homes. It is safe to say that we are learning every day, focusing on supporting our students and looking forward to having our students back in our classrooms. Principal Lockett will send an email to seniors and parents tomorrow, letting them know that there will, that we will be holding a graduation ceremony on June 4th. At this time, the plan is to hold it out in front of the school, directly in front of the main entrance. We have a plan to stay within the state and ODE guidelines and are coordinating that process now. Each candidate for graduation will get one car in our south parking lot and we will coordinate a procession of cars to the stage. The graduating student will get out of the car, their name will be called and they will walk across the stage to receive their diploma from Chairman Edmonds. There will be pictures after moving offstage and then the graduate will get back in their car and return to their spot in the parking lot. Regarding what next school year might look like, the current thinking at the state level that I am aware of has the design based on a physical reopening in the fall. The Oregon Health Authority will be the initial proposer in developing public health guidance and protocols. And the hope is that by mid-May, Oregon Health Authority's work will go to the Oregon Department of Education for further discussion with various education partners and stakeholders regarding implementation. I understand that the aim for that dialogue at the state level is late May, early June. And even though Assistant Superintendent Bush mentioned this, I'm going to go to read another little bit about the Work Share Program. You may have heard about some school districts and private companies considering furloughs under the Work Share Program. We are likewise considering the Work Share Program and we have therefore submitted our application to the state to participate. Our application includes all employee groups, both SFEA and OSEA leadership signed the application with the district. Submitting the application does not bind us to the participation and is not an agreement by association, by our associations for furlough days. That will be a separate process. To be worked on later. After we hear whether our application has been approved, we will then sit down with our association leaders to deliberate the details and draft a memorandum of understanding. Assuming that the requisite MOUs get written, this matter will come back to the school board for approval as it would alter the school calendar for students. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Yeah, Paul, I got a basic question. I mean, is there? Is there brainstorming going on or what, what, what it could possibly look like if this COVID is still out there? I mean, if, if we judge them by the level of the pandemic now and the decisions that are being made for down, passed down from the state. You know, it bears, I, I don't know. I mean, are, are they talking about different schedules, things like that? And I will, and I may just point out a, a, the positive thing about this district is you need to be distant, you know? We hear a lot about distancing right now and this district is lots of smaller communities that are distantly located. Even our, even our larger buildings, with the exception of our high school, are smaller buildings. So I just, there is, there is an advantage there possibly. I don't, I don't know. I just, I don't know what it looks like, you know, if, if they're still want us to do things. Anyway, take over.
The, yeah, the answer to your question is yes, there is quite a bit of discussion happening. I mean, just get online and Google it and you'll see that there are lots of different ideas that people are floating out there. You hear the word hybrid used a lot to, and it means often different things to different people, but it's, you know, some combination of in-person and just learning. So it seems likely that there will be some aspect of school that looks different in the fall. But I believe, I do believe it will be based upon schools being open and having perhaps some small group or limited in-person type instruction happening. Right now, the state has come up with some draft guidance for limited in-person and small group instruction. Say, for example, you're a tiny school district out in eastern Oregon and you've got a student who can go in and work on the wood lathe shop. Well, some of that is being allowed. So. Some of that draft guidance right now is, is being written and talked about as it relates to even summer school. And it seems to me, and this is one person's opinion, that that will likely be the basis for further discussion about what happens in the fall and, and further guidance to come on how we can conduct school in a, in a way that gives every kid a chance to equitably succeed.
Paul, could you repeat the date for the awarding of diplomas? I missed that.
June 4th.
June 4th, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question, Paul. So you mentioned about the other. Like SFEA signing, was it a memorandum of understanding about potentially moving forward on the workforce reduction? Or was, you mentioned something about it being non-binding.
So the application to the state to participate in the Work Share Program.
Okay.
The union leaders did sign on the application with the district and that has been submitted. Now, the, the state will have, what, I think 15 days to, to deliver us a decision. And, and again, this is not binding at this time. It is, it is likely that if we do get the approval to move forward on that, then we'll sit down with our association leaders, kind of hammer out the details of implementation and then I will bring back to the school board. And even if that's a special session, I will work with Chair, Chair Edmonds on that. It will call a special session for the board to approve that because again, it's, it's, although we do sign MOUs with the association as administrative practice, if we did a furlough program, that would be altering the school calendar for students. And so I believe that raises it to the level of the board taking a vote on it.
Very good, thank you.
If I could add or slightly amend that, we are, we're moving to work on, on MOUs with both associations prior to the approval. We don't have 15 days to wait for the state to get back to us on that. We need the details related to this agreement worked out in advance of that. And in looking at some of the other MOUs that are out there, there, there are agreements being made with, with associations related to kind of what happens if it doesn't, if it doesn't get approved. Overall, we're not worried about it being approved. But, but those details, because the only way the district and, and the association realizes any advantages to do this is to, is to enact those days as soon as possible. Some, some have already started to have a furlough day that is early as this week. So the only way is to really maximize that is to expedite. So like I said, we have a, a, a meeting with SFEA Wednesday afternoon and, and waiting to hear back from classified to bargain, bargain that and see if we, see if we can reach an agreement on it.
You know, I, I meant to ask this earlier and it, it just came to me, but how many people do we know currently have been impacted by this COVID? I mean, do we have people that are currently laid off or not receiving any salary due to COVID right now since our trucks, our structure has changed so greatly in the last few months? Do we have a number of how many people have been, been impacted in our district? Maybe per school or?
No, the governor's order required us to keep everybody. I wouldn't say held harmless, but that, that's kind of the, the gist of it is that, so we have, we have not laid off anybody. And so.
So the district hasn't and everybody who has been working for the various schools and stuff, they're still, they're still on. They, they're still.
I, I, so. Nobody has been, has been laid off due to COVID. There were a couple, like I mentioned earlier, there were, you know, every year there are classified changes. There were a couple there. But, but not COVID-related. And so. So nobody has been, has been laid off and our, you know, our teachers are all doing the distance learning and, and we've been a really a huge, I'll try to land this plane here in a second, but a huge, a huge thanks to our classified employees have really done an amazing job of jumping in and doing things that they didn't necessarily sign up to do. To do work and we've, we've put in some, implemented some structures to kind of know who's doing what and trying to help out and, and some things there, so. But to answer your question, nobody's been laid off due to COVID.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Dan, can you repeat something for me? Because I think my connection was a little bit stopped for a minute. I, it came back on when you were talking about furlough. There are a few employees that are already furloughed? Is that what you said?
No, there were, there, there have been two. Two reductions in classified due to changes in, in those schools and their budgeting and whatnot. And those are, those are not unusual changes to happen, but those aren't, those weren't furloughs. So. Just changes due to some enrollments and things like that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Staffing, I should say, not enrollment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to say one thing to Dan. I just sent you a brief question and if you feel comfortable in addressing that, I just. I just wanted to share that, so.
Sure. So the question, you want me to share it? Well, now everybody's going to want to know, so I will answer it.
Only, only if you, if you feel it's appropriate.
Absolutely. So the question is related to spring stipends. And so when this all happened, a lot of districts, you know, the gamut was pretty wide as to what people did with, with spring stipends. Some froze them automatically, some paid them in full. And so what we've developed. We did temporarily freeze some for the month of April. And so we, and we were working out an MOU with SFEA that we should have signed either way, SFEA and have agreed to this portion of it regardless of the MOU. Is that we will be putting a committee together to look at the stipends that were frozen and come to more collaborative process about how those stipends, the extent to which those stipends should be paid out. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you very much. Thank you.
I have a question for you. How much money was frozen? What was the total amount of money that were frozen in stipends?
I'm not sure the, the total that was frozen in that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Well, Steve, if there's something else here for Mr. Peterson, I think you're up.
Thank you, Jonathan. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. So on Board Book, there's a link to a six-page general fund financial statement through the month ending April 30th. And I know there was a question earlier about, you know, what, with the shutdown, and I made mention of this in the Budget Committee meeting on the 28th about that we were saving money in some areas, but in our financial statements for March 31st, our projected any fund balance was 2.4 million. At the end of April, our projected any fund balance for June 30th is now almost a 2.6 million. Now, of course, that is a projection. While we, we've received a lion's share of our revenue this year, we still do have May and, and June payrolls and then of course, June, there's three, three payrolls and there's still a number of things running through the system. So over the next couple of weeks, I'll be. You know, doing some more breakdown of how things are kind of ending, you know, for the rest of the year with our expenses. I know that two of the main categories that we're saving in right now due to the shutdown is transportation costs as well as substitute costs, which is virtually nothing now at this point. Compared to if we were still operating. So that's where the change has come over the last 30 days to the projection to our any fund balance. As you recall, maybe from the 28th, I was projecting closer to maybe a, a 2.8 million any fund balance or beginning fund balance for the start of next year. It's possible that we could get closer to that number, but there's still a lot of variables that could take that number either way. So I won't talk too much more about these financial statements particularly because we will have time to chat about these as well as the budget, questions about the budget document, about lots of the things we've talked about tonight and anything else folks want to talk about at our virtual coffee hours, which we have two on Wednesday, noon and 5:00 and one on Thursday at 10:00 AM. Debbie sent out the information on those last week for you to sign up and, and also I believe she posted it to the website for, for anyone else, our community staff members to join if they'd like. Of course, we can't have any more than six Budget Committee members at any one meeting or no more than three board members at any one meeting. So that'll be open discussion and, and really just kind of Q and A to, to go over all the materials. And just as a reminder, I did, Debbie did post the day after the Budget Committee meeting, those school profile sheets on that same Budget Committee meeting link that we had. So after that. So after that, uh, as was discussed earlier tonight, uh, on Wednesday, the twentieth, next Wednesday will be the official release of the state quarterly economic forecast. So we'll find out right from the Oregon Economic, uh, Analysis Office, what the, what the, what the deficit looks like, uh, for the rest of the biennium. Uh, and then on Thursday, the twenty-first, we are of course slated to meet for our second, uh, budget committee meeting to kind of talk about that news and, and other things that have come about, uh, since the twenty-eighth. So, so those are just some days I wanted to remind you of. And, and just as I, as I mentioned in my presentation, um, on the twenty-eighth, the thing that we're really focusing on right now is saving as much money as we can on this side of the bridge, so to speak. The, you know, Jonathan has the Golden Gate Bridge there. So the left side is fiscal year nineteen twenty and the, the other side of the bridge is fiscal year twenty twenty-one. As much money as we could save right now, uh, the better that we, you know, will be for, you know, for, for trying to fill in the holes for, uh, for next year, um, and, and whatever, whatever we get cut from the state school fund, if that does happen. So, you know, the, the projected any fund balance for the general fund right now is based on just what we're saving naturally right now. But, um, you know, we are talking about the possibility of furlough days. As Dan mentioned, we are meeting with, uh, SFBA on Wednesday to talk about that. Um, and, uh, I think I stated this in the meeting on the twenty-eighth that I may not have, but, um, one day, uh, with everyone in the district taking a furlough day based on this year's payroll and taxes and perks on that payroll saves the district one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per day. Uh, a hundred and forty thousand of that directly, uh, to the general fund. Under normal circumstances, we are, we're a reimbursing employer and we get billed quarterly, uh, for, uh, un, uh, re, excuse me, for unemployment claims, which over the last several years has been pretty minimal. But, uh, and we would, we would be reimbursing the state back for, uh, for most or all of, of what, uh, some of the file for unemployment filed for. However, uh, as part of the work share program, um, that, um, allows for, yeah, kind of a joint effort between the, the, the employment department and the employer, in this case us, um, to, uh, share. Uh, if, if, um, an employee loses twenty percent of their work, uh, no more than forty percent of their work, it kind of, what it allows for is instead of laying off X amount of people, you, everyone takes a share of some missed work time. And people would be eligible for unemployment for, uh, work time that they're missing. So, um, that, that work share program has been around for, for quite some time, as I understand it. But the thing that, that really adds to, uh, the layers to this, this whole deal adds a lot of complexity actually is the, the CARES Act piece, the federal piece, um, which you probably heard, um, and, or read about. It's, it's basically, it's, it's six hundred dollars a week for anyone that's, uh, you know, that's filed for, for unemployment. Whether they're eligible for one dollar of state unemployment or the weekly maximum. And so, um, you know, that, that comes into play whether we're doing one day or two days a week for three or four weeks. Or if we do, um, you know, uh, a whole week at the end or however it's structured, that six hundred dollars comes into play, but it comes into play each week. The state piece, the work, the work share only applies if you don't, um, lay off more than forty, or reduce forty percent of someone's workload. So, so that's kind of the parameters of the work share. And that application that's been talked about, uh, several times tonight was simply because it takes fifteen days, up to fifteen days for the state to process. We really felt it was prudent to at least get that, um, application, uh, sent out. So that the state could receive it and start to process it in case, um, there's an agreement reached about furlough days. Um, it, it certainly doesn't bind us to the program, but it gives us the option if, um, there was an agreement reached on that. So. Anyway, so I think, I think that's about all I wanted to cover for tonight. I, so the other thing I was going to say is, um, you know, the other thing that we're kind of naturally, uh, doing a little bit is, you know, and I think Paul mentioned it in his budget message, uh, on the twenty-eighth. And Dan may have mentioned it as well, is that we, we, for the most part, have a hiring freeze, uh, in place. I know there's one or two exceptions, uh, one in the custodial ranks that we absolutely have to, to get filled. But, uh, that, that's a situation where, uh, it kind of falls into two categories where we might have a position that we know really will most certainly need to be filled, but may not need to be started until, I'll say, July instead of right now, maybe in the maintenance area or something. Uh, then we also have some that, uh, we know that if we need to reduce our total number of positions in any employee group, that we need to, to take a timeout on, you know, if we've had any resignations or retirements, which we have had. You know, as of the end of the year, we're not necessarily saving money for the rest of this year. But it makes sense to not just go right out and rehire those and just take a pause and say, let's not bring any new people in right now until we know the full scope of the picture and therefore the hiring freeze. So I guess that's the last point that I really, really wanted to make. So, but that will turn it back to you, Jonathan. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. That was a lot of good information. I, I really appreciate it.
Um, I do have a question for Steve. Are we having questions for him or?
Sure.
Okay. Quick question. You mentioned, um, that in the last, um, thirty days, we've saved quite a bit on transportation and substitute costs. How much have we saved on that? Do you know the numbers for that offhand or no? I can send you an email.
Yeah, no, that'd be fine. I, I have some numbers here. I don't have my sheet in front of me, but.
I can send you an email with questions.
I know on the transportation piece, we kind of went through a phased deal because we didn't know, every time we were faced with the decision, we didn't know exactly, uh, you know, what was the next phase? Are we going to be longer? Are we going to be close? So you remember we had, uh, I think at the April or May, it had been, it had to have been April or the.
Yeah, it was.
We talked about that first seven days, you know, we paid, uh, X amount, you know, uh, to, to Durham, I think it was eighty-five percent. Then we went down to sixty-five percent. They were delivering all the lunches with seven different routes and they were keeping their folks employed. And we were mandated by contract to pay fifty percent for any council day anyway. Well, now, uh, with the newest governor's order, you know, order from May through the end of the year, uh, actually May eighth through the end of the year, we're at the fifty percent level and they're still doing one. But I, I, I think I calculated, uh, a few days ago, based on the, knowing it was fifty percent for the rest of the year, that our net savings from mid-March through the end of the year, taking thirty, thirty percent, because we're reimbursed seventy percent of transportation costs. At the thirty percent that we would actually save, would equate to a hundred thousand dollars on the transportation. On the subs, I'll have to get back to you on that piece. And then on the stipends, actually I meant to, uh, I'll give you a dollar amount on that as well, but I can tell you that uh, sports are, uh, for middle school and high school are paid by the season. So in this case, for spring sports, uh, is paid in March, April and May. Um, and the thirty-three percent was paid in April. Uh, or excuse me, in March, but the, uh, uh, we did hit the timeout, um, button, uh, for April, but it was not a final decision. There's a, uh, meeting, uh, with SFBA very soon. I don't know if it's the end of this week or next week to discuss a final kind of a settlement, so to speak, on, on where we land on that, um, before the May payroll hits. And, and there are, uh, other stipends that aren't necessarily, uh, athletic or activities that are season specific. There are some activities and also, uh, other stipends that are paid every month throughout the year. And teacher stipends, department shares, uh, special education teachers get some extra days to work on other IEPs. Those types of things. Many of those, again, were paid every month for twelve paychecks. And, uh, many of those, uh, like the, you know, the, the special education stipends, I believe, uh, department shares, so on. So they're still doing that work, obviously. So those, those just continue.
Oh, okay. Very good. Um, thank you for that. I appreciate it. If I have any more questions, I'll email you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any, any other questions for Steve tonight? Okay. Thank you, Steve. Uh, with that, we are on number nine, board reports. Anybody have anything you want to present or report on tonight?
I have something real quick. Um, I just, uh, we got some information from Dan and Paul that I wanted to kind of celebrate and, and give a shout out to Sidexo and district staff for the amazing job they've done providing meals to our students. Um, apparently through April, they had served over fourteen thousand meals to our students. And I just, I just wanted to, to really celebrate them and, and thank them for their, their hard work. Um, it's not easy and I just know how important it is to those students. And it's just such a vital service that our district provides. And I just wanted to, to thank them for that.
Well said, Janet. Thanks. Yeah, agreed. Uh, Jennifer, is that, uh, you? Um, next up, if there's nobody else, next up, we've got, uh, SFBA.
Hello, Jonathan and Board?
Hello.
Can you see me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, well, I just, first of all, wanted to say, um, that I apologize for missing the last, uh, public board meeting in April. Uh, all of the craziness of starting distance learning and just time losing all meaning, um, kind of got to me on that night. And, uh, it was, it was about nine thirty by the time I realized that I had missed the board meeting. So, um, my apologies for that. Um, but I just wanted to give you guys kind of an update. A lot of the stuff that I'm planning to talk about has already been discussed tonight in one way or another. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say, um, I really appreciated what several of the board members had to say earlier um, in regard to the situation with the budget committee. Um, I think that you guys have done a really excellent job of leading from a place of integrity. And, um, I really appreciate the way that you guys, um, have discourse with each other. And I appreciate being able to come before your, your board, um, without feeling, you know, nervous to talk to you guys about, about things that are going on. And I really appreciate that. Um, and so that said, props to you guys. Um, and, uh, next thing that I wanted to talk about, um, was the work share option uh, that Dan and Steve have both already talked about a little bit. Um, so just to give you an update on where SFBA is in that process, um, we've had those conversations with the district. Uh, we've heard, so I've been on a weekly president's meeting with OEA, um, since about the middle of March. They've been doing a weekly update. So a lot of the same information that, um, you guys are probably getting from OSBA and the superintendents and administrators are getting from COSA, um, we're having that information in those conversations at OEA as well. And so, um, based on those conversations, uh, and the feedback that I'm receiving, uh, we've been having conversations with the district in regard to work share. And, um, as of Friday, uh, we did sign off on the, um, application so that we can get that ball rolling in case that is what we decide we want to do. Um, but as of Friday afternoon, um, SFBA, we, we held a membership meeting, a virtual membership meeting, um, with about sixty of our different teachers, where we kind of talked through the work share program and what the potential benefits would be um, to participating in that and also just getting people's questions and concerns about that. And I gave our membership the weekend to, um, kind of review that information and, uh, to, to just go, go through it themselves and do some research themselves as well, um, and just kind of digest that a little bit. And so this morning, I actually sent out a survey to our membership, just getting people's perspective and kind of initial feelings um, towards that idea. And so we're currently collecting that information. And when we meet with the district, uh, later on this week, um, we're, we'll have a lot to talk about. Um, we've, I've, I've had about ninety-six responses as of now. And of those ninety-six responses, I've gotten like sixty-one questions that we're now going to sort through and try to figure out the answers to, um, as best we can, so that we can make an informed decision about, you know, how this is going to work for us if we decide to do it. Um, there's just a lot involved and people do have a lot of questions about it. And, um, and so, you know, we want to make an informed decision with that. Um, the other big thing, obviously for us that I'd like to address is, um, the action that has been asked of you guys tonight to authorize a reduction in force. Um, so I, I typed out, uh, what I wanted to say. So if I'm not looking directly at the cameras, because I'm reading off of my computer, my other computer screen. Um, so forgive me for that. Um, so first of all, I just wanted to say that I do appreciate Mr. Peterson's words earlier, um, when he was talking about taking a balanced approach, not focusing on one specific group. And that making cuts to staff would be a last resort. Uh, I definitely won't forget that he said those things, uh, and I, I appreciated those assurances. Um, however, I do disagree with the interpretation of the collective bargaining agreement language, requiring the board to authorize a conversation. Uh, the language states before any decision to lay off teaching staff is finalized. You're clearly not making a finalized decision tonight. The argument that you need to authorize a conversation does not align with our contract language. And several board members asked some very pertinent and thoughtful questions regarding that specific detail. Mr. Bush even said that he doesn't anticipate any decisions being made between now and May twentieth. Director Traeger suggested making this authorization, if necessary, at the budget committee meeting on May twenty-first. The board and the budget committee would then have the May revenue forecast and a better sense of what our district is actually going to be dealing with and whether such a decision will become finalized and therefore making this activation process necessary. Um, because in order to have a conversation, this, this move isn't necessary. Despite Mr. Peterson's reassurances, to the contrary, I am concerned that approving the district's request for reduction in force tonight may reduce the motivation to seek and find creative solutions. Uh, Mr. Peterson's earlier comment regarding opening conversations with both associations implied that therein lies the solution and leaves me with a deep concern that due diligence in assessing the budget as a whole is less likely to happen. It is imperative that we look at all avenues and make certain that whatever budgetary decisions are made have the least direct impact on our students. Cutting teachers and support staff is not what's in the best interest of our kids. Earlier this evening, it was suggested that given the budget forecast, we would likely be taking more transfer students, thus requiring more staff, not less. Taking this step prior to having all the information, particularly the May revenue forecast coming out on the twentieth, seems premature, even as a procedural step. And SFBA respectfully requests that you defer this decision to a later date after we have more information and a chance to actually assess the situation and whatever a reduction in force and whether a reduction in force is absolutely necessary. So that's, that's what I had to say about that. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions if, if the board has any.
I'm not sure I have a question. I, not, maybe not for you. I, I think the dilemma that, that we're going to face. I'm not sure I have a question, I, not, maybe not for you. I, I think the dilemma that, that we're gonna face. And I know we've already had this discussion to some extent, but the dilemma that we're facing is. I don't, I'm sort of hearing two different interpretations and I sort of feel stuck a little bit. I also am not sure that I know. If, if, if any actual decision has to come back to the board, I'm not sure I understand what the downside. Even if it is procedural, maybe it isn't even necessary. But if we have to come back to the board anyway with any actual action, what's the downside? It feels like it's just prudent, right, fiscal prudence that, to have this conversation. We all know next year's budget cannot possibly be good news, right? So no matter what, doesn't it just seem prudent to have these conversations? And if it isn't necessary, did we hurt anything? That's my question to you.
Yeah, and I think from our perspective, um. The, the biggest thing is that if you make this decision tonight, you're starting a timetable. And starting that timetable is not necessary. Because if you guys make this decision tonight, then I will be emailing you tonight. To say, hey, we need to have a conversation about this. And the reality of that is that we're not really going to have anything to talk about until you've had your budget committee meeting. Until you have a more, um, a fuller scope. And, and view of what is actually coming down the pipe. And there are so many different variables. I mean, I do agree, like, I'm, I'm not naive enough to think. That our district is going to escape this budgetary situation without having to make some form of cuts. I am hopeful that if we're able to participate in the work share, uh, program. That that's going to end up saving us a significant amount of money and hopefully reducing the need to cut staff. Um, you know, I think that we, as a district, have been doing really well financially for a long time. And I think that there are a lot of areas. I was talking to Dan Bush about this in our labor management meeting last week. Um, we've, we've hired a lot of, or like, we've developed a lot of positions in the last few years. Um, that we didn't have before. And so I think we need to have an overall global perspective when we're making these decisions. And yeah, that, that might include making cuts. Um, but I think, you know, I think that authorizing this tonight rings a bell that can't be unrung. And our, our hope would be that the board, um, and the district would want to go into that decision. With more of the facts prior to, prior to ringing that bell.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other questions from Michelle?
Is it my understanding that just because we have submitted an application to work share. We can potentially be denied. I mean, submitting doesn't necessarily mean accepted, correct?
Right, so the district's, um, application could be denied, but at the same time, just because we have, even if we were approved for it. Um, that doesn't mean that, that SFEA or the classified association has agreed to actually doing it yet. Um, that's something that we still are, are figuring out with the district and that we still have to negotiate the terms of, of how that would work. So there are a lot of unknowns for, for any staff person who were to go on, into this program. I mean, unemployment, like the unemployment offices, they are more, more busy than they've been in a long time. Um, I heard a recent statistic that twenty-five percent of the country is out of work right now. And so there are all sorts of things to consider, um, from all sorts of angles. And so that's why we're having. Um, you know, that's why I'm getting the feedback from our membership before going into any, um, negotiations with the district. Because I wanted, I want to advocate for what's best for my members. And in order for me to do that, I need to hear from them and I need them to tell me what, tell me what they want me to advocate for, so.
You know, it is, it is an interesting time because i- in about seven weeks. We're also going to be embracing a new superintendent as well. And so it's, uh, it's a very interesting time that we're all in.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I don't think you could, I don't think a fiction author could write this year.
Michelle, I have a question for you. So earlier, um, in our discussion with, um, Paul and Dan. I had asked the question about it, uh, you know, a timeline or a deadline, you know, that we had to do this. Um, you know, on June thirtieth, Jennifer mentioned that there was a June thirtieth, you know, hard deadline, right? For our budget to go, you know, to be submitted. Um, and the reason they're asking for this tonight. Is because if they have to go to a lay, a layoff or a furlough or whatever. Um, it would give those employees enough time to find another job. So. Can that, I mean, even though we have a hard deadline of June thirtieth to, you know, to turn in our budget. Um. You know, it, hmm, you know, we, we, we would, could we lay off people in, you know, July? I mean, and, and, you know, Paul said, well, we don't want people laid off in August because, you know, they will, they'll have time to find a job. Well, so I'm just trying to think outside the box here. This isn't a normal schedule, right? This isn't a normal time. So I'm thinking, okay, how can we, how can we benefit? Um, you know, both, how can we benefit the amount of time that employees, if they have. If that goes to the route to get laid off to find another job or potential, but then also, um. You know, can we, can we put off that discussion tonight? I mean, do we have to approve this? Can, can we put off the discussion? Or the approval? Do you know what I mean? I'm trying to figure out, you know, budgetary rise with that hardcore deadline. And then courtesy of other people finding jobs if needed.
Yeah, so as far as like the, the budget deadline goes, that's a little outside of my purview. Um, but what I can tell you is that, um, there are no teachers right now. Who are new to the district, who aren't already worried that they're going to be laid off. Um, and so they're already, they're already processing that, they're already thinking about that. Um, so yes, I'm sure that for them, hearing that officially, you know, to know yes or no, that would be, that would. Be beneficial, but at the same time, saying that tonight. Um, it's not going to make a, like, between now and May twenty-first is not going to make a difference in that regard. Um, and as to the timetable, so when you guys make this decision, if you end up making this decision. You're setting off that seven day clock, which I'm going to respond to immediately. And so you're not even, like, the seven days isn't going to matter because it's going to be, you know, within minutes. Um, and then there is no, there is no timeframe for when that meeting actually has to happen. It just has to happen before you make a final decision. And so whether you set that clock off tonight or whether you set that clock off on May twenty-first, when you have more information. Um, you're still, you know, there's still no guarantee that you're going to meet with me immediately. We're still probably looking at that June eighth meeting date, because that's the next time that you guys will be in session. Um, and at least at that point, you will have had time to look at the, at the May, uh, forecast. You will have, you're, you will have had your most recent budget meeting. Um, had some time to digest those changes and to actually have those conversations. Which you don't need this decision to authorize a conversation. So in my mind, if you're, you know, between doing it tonight and waiting until the twenty-first, you know, you're not losing anything.
Michelle, can you, um, explain how the fourteen days, though, plays into the timeline that you just described?
Yeah, so after, after we meet together. You guys then will have fourteen days to discuss and make your final decision. And you have to alert the impacted staff within those fourteen days.
So is that, I, maybe that's the part that our administration is concerned about. Is the getting that fourteen day window, uh, making sure that we can meet that fourteen day. Window before our June thirtieth deadline.
Sure, and, and, and that may, they, well, may very well be the case. Um, but again, whether you start it tonight or whether you start it at May twenty-first, that doesn't impact the fourteen days. Because we're not going to do anything between now and probably June eighth. Um, because you guys aren't going to have the information to have, uh, to have a thoughtful conversation with SFEA. About the, the budgetary impact. Um, you're not going to know that information yet.
Well, I'm wondering also about the impact of our staff to prepare scenarios and different budget options. If we don't. Give them the authorization. So that's, that's the part that I'm wondering about.
They don't need that authorization to have a conversation. Our language does not say that you have to authorize them to talk about it. The only piece of the language is that you have to loop us into the conversation prior to making a finalized decision.
You know, Michelle, that was one of the questions I had. I, it sounds to me like there's been lots of conversations. And so I'm not sure what we are authorizing, if the conversations are already happening. Does that make sense? I mean, unless we're hitting, yeah, like you said, it sounds like it, it, once you hit the clock. You know, now time's ticking, so, but it sounds like the conversations are already in place.
Well, and honestly, Lori, that was, that was the biggest alarming factor when we were informed. That this was going to be on the agenda for tonight. Because conversations were already happening, not necessarily talking about, you know, reductions in force. Um, but for us, for staff members, when you hear that reduction in force is being discussed at a board meeting. And that authorization is being asked for, that's pretty alarming. And again, we're not naive enough to think that we're going to get out of this scot-free, but, um. But yeah, that, that set off a lot of alarm bells within our staff. So. That's why we're just asking, we're just asking for some patience and, um, time to really gather all the information. Um, before, before ringing that bell.
Thank you.
I have article fourteen up right here on my computer and I'm reading through it. Um, you know, word for word, and I can't find. Um. I, I can't find language in this, in, not only in our, um, in this. Uh, bargaining agreement, but in our policy.
Regarding?
Regarding, um. Uh, the layoff and recall of asking. Permission to start the conversation. I just thought I would look up, you know, the policy as well. And I can't seem to find anything in here, but.
That's because the language is regarding finalized decisions.
Right, it is. It says the final decisions. Um, the board shall finalize this decision and provide fourteen days written notification to the affected teachers and the association.
Hmm.
Hmm. I can ask, I'm sorry, in terms of Shelly, I've been dumped out both, during both of the conversations that have happened around the subject. So I apologize if I asked you a question that's already been covered. I don't know, my wife, I hate to say it. Um, okay, so what I'm trying to understand is it seems like there are two board decisions that happen. There's the authorization that we're talking about tonight. And then should it be decided that layoffs are necessary, then there's another board action that's taken later. To authorize those actual layoffs, is that correct? Uh, anyone can jump in.
I, I would say based on our contract language, no. That it's a, when you guys make the authorization, then that sets forth the process. So, so, so when it comes, so I guess, I guess it could be answered in two ways. So, um, so if you're asking if you need to make. Uh, if you need to make an authorization to have a conversation and then make an authorization to make a decision. The answer to that would be no. If you're asking if the process is a multiple step process, the answer is yes. So the first step in the process is this, um, authorization. But it's regarding a finalized decision. Um, if you make a finalized decision, then you need to notify the association. And then we start this, uh, process.
So if we voted today to, um, to authorize it, yours, you were saying that that starts the clock. And then we have seven days within.
I have seven days.
You have seven days to request a meeting or to have a meeting?
To request a meeting. There's nothing, the language doesn't specify what amount of time that meeting has to take place.
Okay.
But it does specify that you have to have that meeting with us prior to finalizing your decision. So basically, you, you say, okay, this is the course of action that we want to take and it includes a reduction in force. Then you notify SFEA, uh, of your decision that a reduction in force is likely to occur. And then we request a meeting and then at some point in the future, we have that meeting with you. Um, where we talk about, you know, potential other, um, alternatives. And then after that meeting, you guys will finalize your decision and you have fourteen days in which to do that. And notify the association and the affected teachers.
And so we do have two decision points. Okay, I think that's what I was trying to get to. We have tonight and then we have a later one. That is precisely about how many layoffs may happen or will happen at that point and, and who's affected. Okay. We're trying to figure out where the seven and fourteen days were coming in and it's between now and that final decision. Are those two periods of time that are designated for certain activities to occur in?
Right, so if you make this authorization tonight, then you are essentially indicating that. A reduction in force is potentially happening because you're setting that clock, you're setting the ball rolling on that. Whereas at this point, it seems like it's, it's more relevant to have that conversation. Rather than to say, we're making a decision that this is, you know, to get this ball rolling.
And you feel like there's a measurable difference between making that decision tonight and making it next Thursday? You feel like that's a substantive difference?
I appreciate, um, going into all situations with as much information as I can possibly get my hands on. And so for me personally, that's what makes the most sense, um, is waiting until you have that information in your hands. Um, because you may end up not needing to make this decision and not needing to activate this, this process. Um, so I guess from our perspective, you're, you're basically, um, moving at a pace that may not necessarily. You know, may not be needed. And it feels a little bit like you're putting the cart before the horse.
Well, that was, I think, something I stated earlier and that's where I'm a little concerned. Why can't we have these conversations now? Can we not theoretically take a look at what would happen if? And that way, if we approved it, what would that look like? What scenarios are we looking at? How can we be creative in, um, protecting the people that do work for the district? I, I would love to see that. I would love to have the parties at the table so we can have this discussion. I'm, I'm, I'm very nervous about approving something that I don't feel that I have heard from every side. Um, I would like more information because this is dealing with people's livelihood, their security. I just.
If I could.
There is, if, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, so I, you know, Michelle and I met with Frank Patrick and Paul on Friday to, to discuss this matter. As it was going for the agenda and I'll just say what I said to, to Michelle there was, you know, and I said it earlier. Is the, the timing concern for me is between May twenty-twenty-one and June eighth. And not seeing a board meeting between, between, um, May eighteenth and June eighth. For this authorization to take place. And so, uh, the, the information regarding the budget between now. There, there will, I'll, Michelle said it and I'll say it here publicly, there will probably not be a lot of discussion between now. And the twentieth or twenty-first on, on this topic. Uh, my concern is. If, if those budget numbers are, are bad on the twentieth and twenty-first. And we, and, and you do not authorize this until the eighth. And then the notice comes and then. And then the notice comes and then, and we're going to be pushed back up against June 30th and, and not a lot of time to make a decision, make decisions. So I, I heard Jennifer bring up earlier about the 21st budget meeting. I mean, I am amenable to, or I mean, it's your, your decision, but I mean, that would be, I, I'm not going to argue against that decision. What I would, you know, just strongly be concerned about is starting this process June 8th. If, if the budget numbers and only giving us a short time before we have to present a balanced budget and knowing that these processes are never fast.
Yeah, and, and I think, Dan, what I would say to that is, you know, if, if the board did decide to wait until the 21st, regardless of if they decide tonight or the 21st, we're still likely going to have that conversation on June 8th. So we can look at June 8th as that starting point for any conversation that's going to, that's going to include SFEA in our contract language and initiating that conver, like that discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm going to jump in here, Michelle. I've been listening a lot. And I am going to lean on the side of counsel and veteran experience from our administration. I understand your concern. But I also hear their concern for the well-being of the staff. And I think that trumps anything that you're worried about. I, I would have to side with counsel.
Yeah, and, and you're, you know, you can totally do that, Erv, and I respect your decision. Like I, I tend to listen to people with, with the most information and experience as well, and I appreciate their experience. I do think that as a representative of the staff, I, I would hope that you wouldn't discount what I have to say because what I'm expressing is what I'm hearing from my staff. And so as the person who's going out and gathering that information directly from the staff, I hope that, that that weighs pretty heavily on your decision-making factors. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's ultimately up to you guys. I'm just trying to give you additional things to think about and and to be perfectly honest, I, I think always having the most information is, is the best way to move forward in any process. And you're not going to have that until after the 20th.
I agree, Michelle, but I don't see no harm in passing this authorization at this point. It's basically mute point. Other than that you have to face reality, this is going to happen. And the sooner we face reality, the sooner the ball can get rolling, everybody can get prepared. That's what their main concern is for. We're not going to come up with big dollars to save this world. It is what it is and we have to follow the council. I really appreciate your work you do with the staff, but I think we have to follow the advice of the council.
All right, yeah, can I pipe in? Michelle, Jan, I appreciate the, the timeline talk. That's kind of where I was really, how that goes down. So, and Michelle, I think I'm hearing you're, you're saying you want to make sure that the, all the information is in to make the best decision.
Yes.
And, and I get, I, I get that. And, and I think you want to, I'm here, we want to make, you want to make sure we're making the best decision. And, and I'm wondering, I, 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 I agree with, with what Erv said is it's, you're showing concern for your people saying, hey, this thing's coming and you guys need to get ready for it. But you, you want to make sure all the information is in to make the best decision. So potentially maybe Paul, Dan can chime in and maybe can there possibly be two rounds of these? For instance, you come through and you make another round, better data comes in and August 1st, you got to do it again. I mean, when you have better information to finalize, but you can tell it possibly a certain group of people that this is definitely coming for you folks, something like that. I, I, I'm just, you know, I, because, because I agree, we're not going to have all the best information here just in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
But, but, but I, I know, I, I know it's coming back. I, I talked to, you know, in doing candidate checks, I talked to a lot of higher-ups and that topic kind of came up. You know, one guy at a pretty big district in, you know, here in Oregon said, you know, I talked about a 15% budget shortfall that we got to fill. And he said, no, it's, you can look at it more like 20 because we had our SIA funds at 5% extra. They took that away and now they need 15% more. And, and I'm just like, oh my God, you know, so I, I just, the sooner we can get this process coming and ring the bell, so to speak, and say, hey, folks, get, get ready. I think it's better.
So I guess.
It's awful, it's awful.
I, I guess where we're coming from and the way that we're ultimately going to probably view this decision tonight is is the board coming at this from an angle of we're going to look at everything and we're going to do everything that we can to avoid cutting the most positions? You know, looking, looking at the overall budget, looking at all of our expenditures, looking at what the work share program could potentially save us. If we were able to do, if we were able to do four days, so like one day for the last four weeks of school, that could potentially save us $750,000. Like how much does that actually cut out of that 17% that Governor Brown has asked for people to cut in their viennium? So my concern, and I voiced this earlier, is that if you ring this bell, if you give this authorization, then that's an indication to your staff that cutting staff is what you're looking for. And so whether, whether you come out and say that or whether you come out and say that cutting staff is going to be the last thing that you do, it still sends that message. And so what I'm trying to do is give you an opportunity to push that messaging forward another, what, seven days? What is today? I don't even know, 10 days. And, and allow yourselves the time to make a more informed decision so that when you do ring that bell, when you do come before our staff, you can stand firm on that decision saying, we have actually looked at everything and we feel that this is the only option. So I guess that's one way of looking at it, is that I'm trying to give you an opportunity.
Sure, I.
You do with that is.
Yeah, yeah, and I hear your point and I, as speaking to Dan's concern and Paul's concern about scheduling, you know, the Zoom meeting, you know, I'm open, if it takes a special meeting to do it, sit on, sit in the chair and turn on the computer and have a special meeting and do what we got to do. I mean, I, if, if that keeps the timelines that Dan's concerned with, helps him out. And if he's, I don't mind doing this, so I, I'm open to any suggestion, but we got to ring that bell since we have to let our people know as soon as we can that this is coming.
Yeah, so, so can we, can we pause this potentially? Is that what you're mentioning, Tom? If we could just pause this just another week or so, so we can gather some more information to see more of what this looks like and have the people at the table? I mean.
I guess, I guess I'd like, I guess I'd like Dan, Dan and Dan, Paul to chime in here. There, there was a timeline Dan's trying to hit. I got, I got kind of lost in the numbers and this had to hap, there was all these dominos that had to fall and he was concerned about some dates. And if he, he feels that there's some things he has to, some dates he has to hit and if.
Yeah, my, my concern, these processes just take, take a lot of work, both just in terms of, of as you, as you make seniority lists and you're looking at these things, if, if we get to that point, those processes just take a lot of time. And, and again, I think, well, I'll just reiterate, the window between the 20th or 21st, after that, but the, the budget announcements made, the budget meeting happens. And if, if, if it's really bleak, I don't think we can wait till June 8th to do an authorization for then SFEA to notify the board of its intent to want to have a meeting, to then have a meeting that pushes us, you know, is that a special session? Because if it's not, that, that's pushing us out to the 25th, which is now a week before a balanced budget. I mean, those, those processes, you, you will not have enough time to go through. If we had to do layoffs, you would not have enough time to do it properly if that authorization doesn't have, if, if we wait till the 8th to do the authorization. That's just not enough time.
Yeah, and I, I think you're probably right about that, Dan, but it's been suggested to do it on the 21st. So I'm wondering if that's something that the board is able to, able to do.
I was, I was looking out for the board not wanting to have another special session, so.
We can have another special session.
We can have a special session.
Yeah, we can.
If the board wants to have, or the 21st.
Yeah.
Just don't, just we can't go much past the 21st.
Let's have a special session. This is, this is about people's livelihoods. This is so critical and I think we, we can, we can have another session.
And then, I don't think it gives the, oh, sorry, and then it gives, it gives administrators the next, you know, week or so, those 10 days to take a look at the current budget. It gives the budget committee time to take a look at the current budget, looks for areas where it's, it's possible to, to trim some fat. And then you guys all come to that budget meeting more informed and ready to make an informed decision.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I want to make sure, I want to make sure this doesn't impact Dan's timeline. I, I don't mind doing it, but I wanted him to say, yeah, it's no big deal. If, if it only, if all it takes is for us to have a special session, I'm for that. But I, I do, it sounds like he's got a timeline to hit. And if he says, have a special session and his concerns are assuaged, then I'm, have a special session.
I can be fine, I can be fine waiting till the 20 or to, to the 21st board meeting or the 21st budget meeting to, I can be fine with that.
I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
I'm certainly okay, but is everybody, I mean, I, I guess I'd like to hear everybody else's concerns or maybe I'm missing something.
I, I think it must be me that's missing something because I don't get what the deal is at all, so.
Well, let me, let me try to explain. I don't think there's any procedural difference between doing it now and doing it on the 21st. I think that Michelle is right in that the message we send to the district is stronger when we say at the budget meeting, you know, this is on the table instead of doing it now. I think that's, that's the main difference, is that we're, we're just sending a different message. I think I do agree that it has to happen, like on the 21st. I think that that's a good compromise. But I worry about going any further past that because we want the public to also have a chance to weigh in. And that is, you know, we have a hard deadline. So I'm fine as well if that seems doable to, to wait until the 21st. I'm also able to have a special meeting anytime. And so that's, that's something that I want to put out there that I'm willing to do in, in the sense of that might meet a lot of more people's needs, that, that solution.
And I just want to say, Dan, I understand and I appreciate what you're saying, but you know, when we talk about timelines and sessions and everything, as we all know, this has been a wild year. And so here we go again, you know, so it's another example of that, so. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I guess I want to hear, I guess I want to hear from Paul and Dan again. I'm still having a special, putting this decision off from tonight until a special session here at some point in the future, not too far from the future. That's not going to impede your work. Your awful work of, of, it's, it's not going to impede your schedule if, if we just wait for a special session, right?
You know, when I, I'm, I'm assessing things based on, I think to answer your question directly, Tom, it's, if, for what I am doing right now and as I look at working on this work share furlough and other things as far as like, you know, just day-to-day, what I'm going to be able to get done, I don't, I don't see there being a big significant difference in that in terms of the budget message, what might be shared, what might be saved with the, the furlough opportunity potentially. I think those are all important factors to be played in. I think Jennifer summed it up, you know, you know, I, I, I will agree with Jennifer and Jonathan. I don't, I don't think the timing matters unless the message matters. And if that's, if that's where you're at, then that, that, that's fine. The, to me, the timing, again, I'm, I'm okay waiting to the 20th or the 21st.
Okay, yeah.
I, I do, I do want to say that I don't think that we're going to have all of the information on the 21st either. And there are probably going to be things that, there is a high possibility that there are things that need to be adjusted after as we go. And so I, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, dress this solution up in, you know, lipstick when it's really a pig because it's not the, it's not going to save us from everything that we hope to be saved from.
Yeah, and I would just, so if I could just add to that, Jennifer, because the, the next wait for will be the legislative session and I, I can't wait that long. If, if, if the governor comes out with a percentage or that she's asking for, or those, those numbers get more solidified, but pending legislative process, we can't wait for the legislative process.
But I, I want to say a little more information is better than not. So I, I think we should just see what we can glean and, and if others feel comfortable with that, let's allow it.
I don't think, I don't think SFEA is going to sit around on this. I think, you know, if we would have made a decision tonight, we would have gotten an email tonight. So I think that everybody gives me, you know, nervous feelings. But I think that everybody realizes that this is critical and that we have to be engaged immediately and look at numbers, look at dates and respond with information. So both Dan can get his work done and get it in. And SFEA can have, you know, some, you know, some say in that, getting more information. I'm available anytime for a meeting. And I think that it's better to be safe than sorry and make rash decisions like this. I think it benefits both. And that's, that's what, that's how it needs to work. So I appreciate the dialogue. I've learned a lot from Dan and Michelle regarding this, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate being able to have this dialogue with you guys. You've asked some really great questions. I appreciate your attention to detail and your willingness to listen to various perspectives. So thank you for letting me come and, and present this information to you.
That was really important and I'm glad that we had the conversation to be sure. While I may not quite understand the distinction between doing it tonight and doing the same thing in a week, the ultimate decision, if it makes everybody happy, I'm fine with doing it then. Okay, so I want to move us along because we still have some things we got to cover tonight and it's getting pretty late. So anything else on this one before we move on?
Well, Jonathan, I was just going to say real quick, I don't usually say a lot, but the reason I said what I did because that was based on what I heard from Dan and Paul was based on the message that the staff was going to get. And that was the best message for the staff.
Right.
So that being said.
Thanks, Erv. Okay, we do have a second public comment period. I believe there's at least one person wishing to address the board. The first one on the list was Ray Kizer, so I guess Ray, go ahead. And if anybody else is lining up, please let Drew or myself know.
Okay, thank you. This is with respect to the action item 12C, the committee member. Mr. Klutfelder has apologized for his con- Mr. Klutfelder has apologized for his comments, although not publicly. I would ask that his letter become part of the public record as an agenda, as an attachment to the minutes. He cannot continue, in my opinion, to be an effective Budget Committee member. And the board should not be cast in the role of being the bad guy by removing him from the Budget Committee. He should remove himself, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, I haven't seen any further requests for public comment. Drew, any coming your way? Okay, with that, we are going to move into our action items. The first one was the Authorization for Production and Workforce. However, it sounds, based on my reading of the tea leaves, that people are generally in favor of moving that to a Board meeting special session, either the night of the Budget Committee meeting, which is possible, though we have to treat them as a separate matter, or we would have to do it shortly thereafter. And I think, I'll have to work that out, sort of as board chair. But anybody disagree with that decision, and I guess more to the point, are there at least four people that disagree with that? Okay. With that, we will move straight into the Equity Policy. We discussed it at some length earlier. I really appreciate everybody's thoughtful comments to my comments. I think, you know, I was soliciting your advice, I heard it. And I believe that you have compelled me that we can move forward, even if I have some concerns about the way the language is worded for a policy. And as a result, I don't have any objection to it. I would accept the motion at this point to approve the Equity Policy as drafted.
I'd like to move to approve the Equity Policy.
I second.
Moved and seconded, Jennifer and Shelley, if I caught it right on Zoom. All those in favor, well, sorry, Debbie wants to roll. So I'll go one through at a time. Lori.
Aye.
Aye. Tom.
Aye.
Shelley.
Aye.
Er. That's an aye. Jennifer.
Aye.
Janet.
Aye.
And me, I'm going to say aye. Thank you guys for hearing me out early. Motion passes. Next up, Budget Committee decorum. We had a lot of discussion about that. My reading of the tea leaves on this one was that there was not going to be an action tonight. However, we had considered possibly adopting a resolution in the future, and we had considered, well, we had instructed our Budget Committee Chair to ask that Mr. Klutfelder have the floor at the beginning to issue that apology, which he has already opted to do. Am I misunderstanding, is there an action item somebody's looking for tonight?
I just wanted it to be clear that I would like to reiterate that I would like an, an actual public apology directed to me and to the Budget Committee, and to the public at large, specifically. I think that's very important. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move on to our final action item tonight, which will include some discussion as well, because we sort of waited till the end for this one. As all of you know, we've been undertaking a lengthy public process to go through our superintendent selection. We have narrowed it down, and thanks to Tom's hard work, have negotiated a contract with Mr. Scott Drew. And so at this point, I would like to make sure that any questions or concerns that we have regarding the contract prior to voting on it are discussed now, so that we have that opportunity before we go and accept a motion to approve it.
So Jonathan, I had several questions about the email that you sent. Are we allowed to discuss all of this in public?
Well, it would depend on what the "this" is. I suspect anything that's in the contract we're going to vote on, we can discuss in public.
Okay. So, um, I have a question about the salary, and all of the things that you put in your email.
Go ahead, Shelley, I'll, I'll see if I can.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tom, I appreciate it. Um, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We were in the, we were within the parameters of our salary range. However, it says here that we are significantly low in our range of salary. And I pulled up our Administrative Salary Guide, and step 10 for a superintendent is $145,858.46. And according to that, we are significantly low with surrounding areas. So can you, can you elaborate on that, Tom? Because I was shocked when I read that, and I thought, wow, okay.
Well, I'm not, yeah, it's kind of a difficult que- I don't, we don't, this contract doesn't have any steps in it. I believe Andy's had the previous, that was a, I'm not quite sure how that step program worked in the, like, the, the contract two superintendents ago. Jonathan, you're looking like you're trying to say something.
Yeah, let me chime in here. Step, steps as it relates to a superintendent are either defined or not defined in a superintendent contract. They're not a construct that, in the same way that they exist for, for licensed or for administrative staff, right? This is, the, the salary and compensation for a superintendent is, is defined in the contract, and it's a one-to-one contract. That contract is for that superintendent, between that superintendent and the board. This is not, any reference to steps is just verbiage chosen by either the board or by the superintendent in negotiation, but they aren't really applicable, per se. Compensation is defined in the contract, and it's defined separately. And the concept of steps is just, it's, it's kind of made up, honestly, in the, with your, your superintendent, in my understanding.
Yeah, I was always kind of, yeah, that never made any sense to me either, Jonathan. You seem to be a better, understood how, when, and when and where that was. But I mean, the, the salary here is based, and any, and it's, the raises will match the COLA that the teachers get. That's how that goes going forward. And so that's how this is governed as it's current, as it's currently written. And then it's a, I don't know, is it, Shelley, did you have any more, any other questions? I.
You're muted, Shelley.
Oh, you're Shelley, you're muted.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just, you know, a lot of the stuff that's in here, the tax sheltered annuity, you know, the 3% COLA and all of that, I, those are very familiar to me from previous contracts with our superintendents. So that wasn't very shocking. It was just the salary part plus, you know, all the rest, you know, added on to. I guess it was just the base salary part that I was a little bit shocked on. And I, Tom, I think I sent you an email about that, just to clarify. And I just wanted to talk about that, because it's, it was confusing to me after. And maybe Steve, maybe I could send an email to Steve to help me, you know, have some more clarity on that, so.
Yeah, that was, that, yeah, that was, there was so much information that I have processed in the past four or five days. I don't, maybe some of you have heard me say this, but I don't ever want to do that again, holy cow.
I did read that.
What a, it was, yeah, and, and I don't mean that as a bad way. I, I enjoy complex problems, and I, you know, I, I got, I got to dive in and learn a lot. But, you know, one of the things that I learned, had to bone it really quick, is that superintendent compensation in Oregon has changed a lot in the past two, three, four years. Primarily, when you look at superintendent salaries, it's just a flat, and, and you can go to OSB, you can go around and see it, and they give that salary range, and there it is. But there's, and, you know, and this is what I really had to do the past two, three, especially the first couple of days, it was like, holy cow. Virtually every superintendent contract in the state of Oregon, it's probably everywhere, I suppose, but there's other payments in the back, you know, not in the back, but they're just deeper, you know, in the contract, like tax shelter.
Yeah.
Things like that, and that, that I wasn't prepared for, and I really had to bone up on it to make sure that what we were doing here was in line with the comparable rules in our area and stuff like that. And so I tried to get something that is as transparent as possible. So you've got the base salary, there's the TSA. There, there isn't a lot of hidden, there just isn't a lot of hidden compensation buried deep in the language.
Right.
Interpreted, that you have to have a lawyer license to, to, to understand it. So it's pretty direct, there it is, transparent.
Yeah, so I, yeah, a lot of this, a lot of the language that was, a lot of the language that was given, it's, it looks really familiar just from the previous.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Too much, but.
I saw, I saw a lot of comparables, and, you know, I, I attached the, the documents from the, I think maybe seeing some of the comparable sheets that, that Scott's consultant Haven had and provided for me. Those, those all checked out, but, you know, a lot of, you know, but a lot of them, I felt, had inflated travel stipends, maybe some technology stipends, and I tried to keep everything just, you know, we're getting the same, this is the same travel compensation that all our administrators use. It's the same tech stipend that all of our administrators get. So I tried to keep it, I tried to schedule something to, you know, bring Scott to the table, lure him from a, a, a secure job that, that he, that he currently had, and have a contract that doesn't have a lot of language locked in. And then as we see his performance over the next few years, it'll give us opportunity to negotiate with him as seven of us, and not just one guy kind of flying by the seat of his pants, so. And I, I have some input for OSBA, too. I thought it was, their, their process can probably be, be improved, doing what's kind of related to the current changes. And I'll, like, that to serve and Steve, you know, in the next few days, once my mind settles down.
Right.
Yeah, so any questions, fire away, but that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Right. So the performance evaluation, can you, are we, you know, there's an 18-month option, you know? Let me get to the wording.
The performance evaluation, I, I'm pretty sure was ours. I didn't really, that was what I think we had talked about.
Yeah, because he has a buyout that is 18 months of his starting salary. So he has an 18-month buyout, so when, when was?
I think it was 15, but yeah, I think, I think the math works out to 15. But there's, there's a, there's a set number there that, that's a buyout, that gives him security, you know? That way a, a board can't just change and then just tell a guy to go. There's, there's some pain involved if you want to just remove the superintendent. So there's an incentive, you've got to work with the guy you got, you know, so you can work out your differences and, and move on. So that's, that's pretty standard. Most of the previous, our previous full-time superintendent had, we would have had to buy the whole contract out, and that, that's pretty common, too, so.
Right.
I was glad to reduce that down, so.
So how does that correlate with his performance evaluation? If, you know, like.
The buyout and the performance evaluation?
Yeah, like if he has, like, how often do we, do we just give him a one performance evaluation in that 18-month period? And then, you know, because he, he would have an option to, you know, leave in 18 months. Do we have anything different in language as far as performance evaluation goes? Do we have like, well, you know, maybe a mid-year and then a full year? You know, and then after that, after the 18 months, we're good to go, and we'll just do it one year after that, one time.
Yeah, I think you may, I think, I'm not quite sure if I understand the question. I think there's some, there's a, the 18 months that, that were really, I think it works out to, it's a 15-month. I think, are you referring to the dam, the liquidated, the liquidated damages provision? The buyout, is that what?
Fine, there's some, okay, so.
I, I don't think that there is any correlation, per se, between the section on performance evaluation and the section on the liquidation of, you know, buyout clause.
Yeah, yeah.
That unrelated, right? I mean, if performance were to be a concern, that would be addressed through probably non-renewal of contract. The buyout would come in place should we sever the contract prior to its term without just cause, right?
Right, right.
This activity, then we wouldn't be held liable, but it would not kick in if we simply weren't thrilled with the performance, right? So there's no correlation there. I'm not sure I understand the question either.
Well, I'm, I'm probably not being very clear. It's 11 o'clock, so.
Yeah.
I'm exhausted.
But I think, but, but I think, yeah, but I, I think with any superintendent in our employment contract, if we, if we wish to give a mid-year performance evaluation, we just call an executive session and.
Just do it.
Just do it, yeah.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that the performance evaluation was fair to us and him, in, in case something happened. Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, maybe I'm not making, maybe I'm not.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
I wanted it to be fair to both, you know?
Sure, we, I, I, yeah, I know we all work together, and we, we all, we wordsmith some new, new language in the performance evaluation.
Yeah.
As a board, and that, that exact language is in here, so.
Great, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Other than that, I'm, I'm, I think I'm fine with it. It sounds, you know, it's like a pretty straightforward contract, that I've seen lots of this language before, so.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to achieve, straightforward.
Yeah, thank you.
We had a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief comment. And first of all, Tom, thank you for all your work. I know that you really put in endless, endless hours into this to make it work for everyone, and I thank you. And the fact that you were challenged, and you're an engineer with this, it's, it's something. But thank you for all the work that you've done, and I just want to say that I'm comfortable with it, I'm, I'm comfortable with the contract. And, and I would go to the point that Tom stated, that I believe that OSBA left a little bit more to be desired in that contractual component. And so that, that was a little bit, I think, of a letdown, that we spent so much time together and coming together with our decision, and then everything happens, happens at this turbo rate, you know, as far as contracts go. And it's not as easy as I think that, where, it, it, it seems to, I don't know what your feeling is, but to me, it's, it's much, you've got to have an attorney with contracts, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really hard. Things have, things have to happen fast. You can't go slow, because your, your candidate might get a better offer.
Right, right.
You, you got to move fast, and it's, it was difficult over, everything was over email. We couldn't, you know, if I, if I could wave a magic wand, I would like to have something similar to what we do when we bargain for, with, with our, with our unions. I wish it could have been me, and my helper Lisa, 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 Lisa Freely really stepped up and helped me a ton, especially, you know, she has so many contacts in the area that she could call and research other contracts, and just, you know, they're, they're all public, but she knew how to get them, and it, it's just, you know, but it would have been nice if it would have been me and her on one side of the table, Scott and his guy on the other side of the table, and you work it out, go caucus, figure it out, come back, go home, go to sleep, figure it out the next day, be done with it. But, but we couldn't do that. You do it over email, you ask probing questions, and you kind of think, is that person being a jerk? It, it, and it's not, you know, because you're, you're just seeing black and white. You, you don't get to see body language, you know, facial expressions, and we, but we got there. So, you know, don't, don't misinterpret. So, you know, don't, don't misinterpret anything, you know, anybody who's listening, don't misinterpret that it maybe took a little bit longer than we thought, that at any point was it contentious at all? It went great. I mean, it was, it was, it was fine. So I'm very happy.
Your work. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to.
I got any more, any more questions or?
Really appreciate. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
What was going on. And I think that, you know, it was a lot of work. And I learned a lot in the process too, actually. And I think, you know, I've already given OSBA some feedback regarding the, the question of sort of salary range and the approach. And I hope you all do the same if you have that level of concern. I know I do. I don't have any concerns with the contract. I appreciate it, and Tom did with it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say for the record, I did, I did have some really boring, like, technical clarification questions that I shot to Jonathan. And, and he was really prompt in responding to those, and I don't know that they're worth talking about because they were just really areas that I wanted cleared up. So thank you, Tom, and really good work, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? If not, I will accept a motion to approve the contract.
I make a motion to approve the contract as written for Mr. Scott Drew.
I'll second it.
You're going to fight over it. I saw Jennifer. Okay, moved in second by Erv and Jennifer. I will go through the list. Lori?
Aye, yes.
And Tom?
Yes, aye.
Erv?
Uh, yes, aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Shelley? That's an I. Janet?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, everybody. And thanks again to Tom. And now I'd like to give Mr. Drew the opportunity to introduce himself.
Well, thank you so much. That was a long couple of days, Tom. I'll tell you what, I'm super glad. Yeah, it was, it was. But super excited. Thank you so much for inviting me tonight. It was a pleasure to, to listen in and to hear all the, all the wonderful work going on and, and the challenging stuff ahead. You know, I just, I'm so excited to work for you all in, in Silver Falls and can't wait to get there and start getting to know people. But I will tell you, I got a, I got a text from one of the principals, and it was just the kindest text. And, and it's really made me feel exactly how I felt with all of you in the first round of interviews. I just felt I had a personal connection to you, and that really was the biggest difference in this whole process for me, just from the very start. And Tom, you're so gracious over the past week. I just wanted to thank you for that also.
Well, thank you. So are you.
For anybody, yeah. For everybody listening in, I can't wait to meet you too. And it's only going to be several weeks, and, and then the real, the real work begins. And can't wait to meet the team and, and get started.
Okay, very good. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
Indeed, welcome.
Welcome, Scott. We're excited.
Thank you.
Welcome and congratulations. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice to have you on board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Debbie. So 12A and 12C, we just kind of moved past it. Do we need to take a vote? Or are we good?
There were no actions taken.
Okay, very good.
They were both non-action.
Thank you.
Any further business for tonight?
One last thing. I will be working on the resolution for decorum. If any of the board members wish to send any thoughts or contact me directly, please do. I welcome that. So thank you.
Okay, with no further business.
Holy cow.
We will wrap it up tonight. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye, good night.